Good morning. This meeting of the Baltimore City Council Health, Environment and Technology Committee is now called to order. I'm Danielle McCray. I'm the chair of the committee and also the councilwoman representing the 2nd District. In attendance, we have Mark Conway from the 4th District. He is a member of the committee. Also in attendance, we have Sophia Gabrin-Hewitt from the Mayor's Office, and Preston Lewis from the Council President's Office. Also in attendance, we have Matthew Peters, who is staff to the committee. Before we get started, I just want to ask everyone, and please take a moment to turn off or silence your cellphone. Also, if you have joined us in the council chamber and you would like to testify, there are sign-in sheets just outside the door. Please sign in and check the box to indicate if you wish to testify. Today, the committee is holding hearings on LO-22-0019 Quarterly Legislative Oversight Hearing, Department of Public Works, and LO-22-0027 Quarterly Legislative Oversight Hearing, Department of Transportation. We're going to start with LO-22-0019 for the purpose of calling for quarterly oversight hearings for the Department of Public Works regarding agency operations, staffing, safety of fleet, facilities and equipment, and other responsibilities to improve transparency and accountability in serving the residents of Baltimore City and others. And I'll just say, coming into our 4th DPW Quarterly Legislative Oversight Hearing, I do want to thank DPW staff, also our director, and other representatives for just staying engaged and working to address our city's most pressing issues. We will continue to use the following legislative oversight hearings to receive updates and further information on new and existing initiatives, timelines, agency challenges, and citywide concerns. This committee is collectively dedicated to ensuring that all city services are not only restored, but reliable and consistent for all residents, visitors, and other respective stakeholders. And again, I do want to thank you all. And at this time, you guys do not have a presentation for this one. Is that correct? Perfect. So, we are going to go right into questions. And I have a few, and I'm sure Councilman Conway has a few as well. So, I'm going to start with waste diversion, zero-waste and just sustainability practices. At our August hearing, it was stated that solid waste was actively recruiting for a recycling associate and a chief of waste diversion, zero-waste manager. Have those, and zero-waste manager, have those positions been filled?
Good morning. Yvonne Moore Jackson. So, the zero-waste manager position has been filled. The candidate is going to start on next Monday, the 14th. The recycling associate has not been filled. The, we did recruit for it, but at the last minute, the person declined the position. So, we have to start over with that one. But we do have the program analyst position filled, and that person is here today. And also, the administrative analyst has been filled also. So, the only vacancy we have in that section now is for the recycling associate, and we are currently recruiting for that.
Okay. Thank you. What initiatives will the zero-waste manager currently be overseeing related to waste reduction and diversion?
So, they will be working with the zero-waste advocates. They will also be working with the Office of Sustainability on waste diversion activities. Our composting, we have a composting pilot at the five drop-off centers. They'll be working on that. They're working with some of the universities and hospitals on ways to compost and some sustainability activities. And I don't, I don't have the list in front of me, but they will be the person that's responsible for all of the activities for waste diversion along with the other employees in that office.
Thank you. In terms of sustainability, reuse of materials is obviously one of the most efficient ways to protect our ecosystem. How is DPW engaging other city agencies in dispersing composted materials for projects and overall beautification and greening of our communities?
So, we are working with the Office of Sustainability on composting activities. And then, I'm just going to ask Megan. She's the one that's been working on this project. If she could come up and just give a little update on what's going on.
Good morning. Megan Wrestler, Program Analyst for the Office of Waste Diversion. So, we just received a grant from USDA for composting. This grant, we worked with the Office of Sustainability and higher ed partners to develop food waste diversion programs, to support food rescue organizations, and to partner with several higher ed organizations to expand our food scrap drop-off programs. So, oh, and we will also expand workshops and education around composting, composting-at-home workshops. So, teaching the communities how to compost in their backyard if they don't have access or the ability to drop off their food scraps at our many locations.
What community-based organizations are you working with on that project?
We're working with Be More Community Food and For My City for the food rescue. And then, also, we're working with Loyola, JHU, and UMB for our higher ed organizations.
Thank you. I'm going to transition. I'm not sure if this is a question for you at this time, but if it's not, someone else will come up. But as we spoke about it during our August hearing, it was, we spoke about Maryland HB264 going into effect January the 1st of next year. And the bill requires certain generators of large quantities of food residuals to separate the food residuals from other solid waste and ensure that food is being diverted from the final disposal. As the enaction date approaches, where is DPW in preparation for the law?
I know that we have attended some informational meetings with MDE. And MDE is working on educating. They have had some, like, open meetings where stakeholders can come and ask questions on how the law will apply to them. That's, that's the information that I have.
How, how is DPW working with, how is DPW working with entities that meet the diversion requirements? Just to ensure that they are aware of the law? Or that they're also creating plans to comply with the law?
I don't have the answer to that question.
Yeah. Can I get back to you on that, on that answer? The person that's working on that isn't here today, unless, Marsha, you have something?
Thank you. Marsha Collins, Department of Public Works, Legislative Affairs. One of the efforts that we worked on before Megan came on board was talking with MDE about how we're going to identify the entities within the city that would be subject to this law and would be subject to it in the future when it ratchets down from 2,000 pounds a year to 1,000 pounds a year, a week. I'm sorry. And we also worked, gave comments to MDE about their outreach and their regulations. We are hoping to get, what we really want to get right now from MDE is how we're going to identify the appropriate people and begin to reach out to them. I think a lot of the institu-, large institutional people who are located in Baltimore are aware of the law, and we've had some interactions. And I know our zero-waste collaborators have had a lot of discussions with them about their, how they're going to go about it. For the zero-waste advocates, they really would like to see a locally-positioned composting facility, which is going to be a challenge to meet that very first year of requirement under the law, because we don't have one, and it's going to take time to create one. But there has been, in their discussions, they have shared with us that those large entities would be more than happy to be able to bring their food waste that can't be donated to a local composting facility. And so, there is support for the material so that we could establish a compost facility. So, it's in the early discussion phases. We are hoping to get a list soon from MDE, because otherwise, we're going to have to be hit and miss in trying to reach out and begin to have these conversations with these organizations and institutions. So, identifying the people had been a real concern for us. That's kind of where we are right now. I don't know if that helps answer the question.
It does. Megan and Marsha, thank you both for your responses. I have a question for you, Director. Our city thrives when city services are reliable, when they are consistent, and when they're at full capacity. Where are we at on bulk trash pickup?
I can speak too, and Yvonne can go into some more detail. You know, right now, our city services, when we're looking at the Bureau of Solid Waste, are all up in operational pre-pandemic level, with the exception, as you know, of the bi-weekly recycling. Assuming that we can get staff and everything up, we still will have some challenges outfitting to a weekly recycling program. I think for us, when we look at our staffing levels, it would, it would give us more stability. So, whether that's street sweeping, whether that's bulk trash, whether that's corner cans, it gives us the ability to have enough folks in different programs whereby if people call it off, take sick, get vacation, get hurt, that we can sustain the level of service. What happens is when we have a vacancy rate of 14%, when someone calls in sick, we may not be able to fill a route, or we have to backfill it. And so, when we are looking at a full staffing load, that means that, that those programs on a day-to-day will be as consistent as possible. In addition, as relates to bulk trash, it, I think we're only a few weeks, I think, behind on service requests. Yvonne could talk more about that, not operation up and going, but Yvonne can talk to us as far as timelines, how fast can we respond?
Yeah. So, bulk, bulk trash is scheduled, and it's, it's based on, on what area of the city that you are in. So, we started, we started bulk in October 2021. Previously, there were five days where people could, five days of collection for bulk. When we restarted in October, we added a sixth day. So, now, we are collecting bulk Monday through Saturday. But when you call in, your 311 operator will give you the next available bulk request day for your area. So, for example, if your, if your day is the first Monday, and all of those days, I'm sorry, all of the slots are due for that Monday, then your next will be, will be the next following month on a Monday. So, it's based on where you are in the routing, in the routing system. But we are current on bulk collection. So, if you call and we give you a date, then that's the date that we'll be out to pick it up.
So, bulk trash is not in a modified state any longer? Is that correct?
No. It's, we're up and running. So, we're, like I said, we are Monday through Saturday for bulk collection.
Okay. Has the service, has it been restored where folks can put in their bulk trash requests online again? Or is the only option that's still available that you call 311 directly?
I'm not sure if they, if it's an online service. I know you, you have to call. I'm not sure. I can follow up with that, with an answer with that.
If you all could follow up, if you all could follow up today by close of business and just furnish that particular information to the committee?
Yes. I can send out a message now, see if I can get it for you before the end of this hearing.
That works for me. If it is not restored online, I would like to know how long it's going to be restored, since it's no longer within a modified state. We have also been joined by Councilman Ryan Dorsey from the 3rd District. You're very welcome, sir. Councilman Conway, did you have any questions at this time?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good, good morning, everybody. I got a couple of questions, and this really goes to the nuts and bolts of the department, the Bureau. I know a few months ago, when you guys presented to us, we talked a lot about hiring and vacancies. Can you tell me a little bit about what our vacancies look like today? How close we are to being sufficiently staffed to meet the needs of the department?
Richard Luna, Deputy Director. I can give you the overall vacancy numbers and kind of strategies and recruitment priorities that we're working on right now. And then, if there are specific questions for any of the bureaus, they can take those questions as well. Just overall, for DPW, that currently, as the end of last month, we're at a 25% vacancy rate for the agency. We do realize we have critical vacancies, primarily in the bureaus for CDL drivers 1 and 2, also for our laborer positions, and then for solid waste, our solid waste worker position. So, we've been working with our DHR office in prioritizing those recruitments. We do have candidates on the eligible list, eligibility list for those positions. And so, we've actually also worked with Mercy to increase the allotment for the number of pre-employment screenings that need to be conducted. So, we're working with them to make sure that, you know, we're having enough people that go through the pipeline that can get pre-qualified and then get through the process, and then immediately getting them offer letters so that we can get them into the positions that we need. So, I think those positions primarily, we'll be tracking over the next few weeks to see how the progress is moving forward that. And I believe with those positions specifically, that could actually bring down our vacancy rate, provided we're able to get the people through the process.
And you said 25%. How many individuals is that?
A quantity number for that? We have, we have 180, I'm sorry, I can, let me see if I can get it from this file here. A quantity number, it's about 700, 700 total positions that are open.
Thank you. Can you give me the breakdown? You said the top three needs that we had were needs for CDL 1 and 2, laborers, and solid waste. I'm not sure what exactly solid waste means, but can you give me a little bit, the breakdown for those three major positions? How many openings we have there?
I can talk about it by bureaus. If we just look at solid waste right now, quantity, total number of vacancies, solid waste worker is the highest at 19, CDL driver 1 highest, next highest at 16, laborer 16 vacancies, CDL driver 2 15 vacancies. And then, if we go on to the Bureau of Water and Wastewater, for the CDL drivers, that's 28, laborer 25, and CDL driver 2 21.
Thank you. And then, my other question, and I'm thinking about nuts and bolts here. What are the condition of our vehicles? I know, you know, we need people, we need equipment. How are we doing with our vehicles? Are we in a, in a good position or not?
We have, we have, much of our fleet is pretty old, but we have requested replacement vehicles. And we have 50 vehicles on order, 35 new load packers, and 15 mini-load packers. So, they should be coming in in the next two, 12 to 18 months. So, we're working with DGAS to get replacements for all of our oldest vehicles.
With the current needs that you have, does it affect operations? Or are we still okay in the meantime? And this is just going to?
Yes. Right now, we are, we're okay. You know, they are keeping the vehicles on the street, keep them running for us so we can perform the services.
Okay. Thank you. The other questions that I have, I'll ask this every single time, just, of course, recycling. Do we have an update on where we are in getting to weekly recycling?
Good morning, Councilmember Conway. Where, as, as we outline in our monthly report, we're finalizing our Rubicon study of our route optimization. The outcome of that is going to entail, you know, short, medium, long terms to get to weekly. It's also going to provide numbers of what the crews are challenged with today, with the number of staff and the number of equipment. So, we expect to have that report, I think, and later this month, early next month. So, we're looking to, to have that information. We're looking at this really from a data perspective, looking at it not just from a Baltimore city's perspective, but we're looking at case studies of larger municipalities that does its work, not only at the local government level, but at the private sector level, and so that we can understand what best practices is. What's the average unit count for a pickup for a 10-hour day? And, you know, all the circumstances, just around understanding not only solid waste, but recycling pickup. And so, we'll have that report later this month, early next month. And it'd, it'd give a holistic review on, on where we're at from a data standpoint so that we can articulate what's the next steps forward.
Okay. And I appreciate that. Thank you. And I know we don't know the, the data yet. It'll come with that report, end of this month, early next month. Do we have any sense of timeline for changes to the operation, testing, or anything like that? Do we have goals or anything that we're shooting for?
No. I mean, we, we have been preparing. We, as Yvonne mentioned, we began ordering equipment earlier this year, understanding that, number one, we have aging fleet, but also understanding that potentially, we may need more crews and more routes. So, we began earlier on, working with DGAS, procure more vehicles. And that's what you heard, do Yvonne. I think there's 15 mini-packers, 35 large packers, and then, there's another order of 15 additional large packer trucks that will help to not only potentially improve, if we have to increase the number of routes, it'll bring new equipment to do that. But it also improve the uptimes on the vehicles that are older in our route. The newer trucks stay up longer. And so, we, we've been planning for that scenario, understanding that once we have the data and report and know where we need to go, we're as prepared as possible to move forward as fast as possible.
Thank you. I'll wait to come back. Thank you. Madam Chair.
Councilman Dorsey, did you have any questions at this time?
I have a number of questions, Madam Chair. Thank you. First thing I want to ask about is stormwater credit applications. As of October 14th, there was a backlog of 78 stormwater applications. Some of them are as old as two years old, to my knowledge. I don't understand why we can't approve stormwater credit applications for rain barrels, particularly the easiest, most straightforward of things. I installed a rain barrel, or I didn't install a rain barrel. I put in an application, after I put a rain barrel in my house, I get a credit. That's a 10-minute operation, and yet, we have a backlog of applications for this credit that are upwards of, or in excess of, two years old. It's a one-time credit for $25. What's the holdup?
First, thank you for the question. We, I have looked at this matter with the team. We do have a few outstanding requests that we're working to, to get down significantly this month so that we can be on par with those credits. So, I don't have the exact numbers, but we can provide you with those numbers after, after this meeting.
Have we fixed something operationally so that this is not being delayed going forward?
I just wanted to give a quick up, update on the issue. Yes, you're correct. We are looking at the process. I spoke with Ms. Grove about this, and she looked at the processes and felt it was unnecessarily complicated. She, as of the time I spoke to her last week, had gone ahead and approved all of the rain barrel applications that were in the queue. There may be a pause for it to get onto the customer's water bill, depending on their billing cycle, but she did go ahead and make sure that all of those advanced, and is looking at how to supersimplify it so it doesn't happen again.
Great.
Thank you.
I'd like an update, if I could, just an email, just to let me know what's changed or whatever, how we're improving that. There are other things that occasionally get backlog. My understanding is that stormwater credits, stormwater credit applications in general are not supposed to take more than 30 days to review and process and determine that there is a back funding or whatever for the months that a credit might have been due when there is a delay beyond that 30 days. But I, I don't know how many applications in that realm there may also be in some backlog. I'd like to get a sense that we are, we have a handle on that as well, and are addressing that as well. I'd also like to know, similarly, what or that we have in place, a clearly articulable standard process for voluntary stormwater, voluntary green stormwater installation in the, particularly in the public right-of-way, because that requires collaboration between DPW and DOT. And that it's one of the ways where interested parties, particularly nonprofit entities, including churches, who may want to do something to better their communities, can make environmental improvements to their neighborhoods that are also aesthetically improvements, particularly to neighborhood streets and corridors where we want to encourage foot traffic. And in, in so doing, are often also creating traffic calming, safety improvements. So, wherever we have the potential for, for multiple forms of beneficial impact, I want to make me sure that we are not creating a burdensome process. And so far as I know, we are creating a burdensome process at this point. I don't, I just don't know. So, I'd like to see clearly articulable standards of a process and timeline for how such things are reviewed. Next issue I have is related to recycling can lids. We have a known defect in the lids of the cans that the city purchased and distributed to residents. I only know that it has been addressed on the scale of, I sent a list of addresses that were voluntarily brought, voluntarily brought to me. And considering it was, I think, about 50 from, I think, one street alone, I have to believe that that problem is of a scale that has not yet been met, considering I haven't seen any citywide messaging from the department about how we're going to address this. Anybody and everybody who has one of these cans should be prompted to know that there's a potential that their can has a defective lid and that we're ready and willing to replace it before the warranty runs out on it, which I assume is not particularly long, and we've had these cans out for a while now. Yvonne, do you know what's up with this?
Yes. So, we, we have sent some of the defective lids back to the vendor, and they're looking in to see why that is happening. In the short run, they've sent us replacement lids. So, when we get a call from a resident, we're, we're able to replace the lid. We do have a warranty. We do have a warranty on these recycling bins. So right now, we are working with the vendor, and if anyone has a defective lid, they can call three-one-one, we'll come right out, replace the lid on that can.
What is the warranty period on the cans and when did it begin? Or when does it end?
We have a ten-year warranty.
Ten-year?
Yes, on the, on the recycling bins.
Well, that's a much longer warranty than my DVD player. That's, that's good to hear. Can we send something out, like with the water bills, and say if you have a crack or defective lid? Because I know after the whole wave of cracked lids, which was an identical crack in countless lids, I also noticed, and all what was brought to my attention were the full-size, standard-sized ones. But then I was at my parents' house recently, and for some reason, my dad requested the small one. I don't know why. It didn't make any sense to me either. His was severely warped right out the gate. And so it's not just a problem with the full-size ones. It seems like there's a different problem in manufacturing with the smaller ones, potentially.
Yeah, so when you first get the can, because of the way that they're stacked, your lid is going to be a little off, but then that, that corrects itself?
He's had it for how long now? It did not correct itself?
Oh, it did not? Oh, okay.
No, it's severely warped in exactly the same way that it was when it arrived, Jim. Or it developed the warp within days of it.
Okay, so we can, we can get a replacement, and if anyone has any issues with their can, they could let us know, and we'll get a replacement lid or, or a replacement can.
So we send out leaflets inside the water bills. Is this something that we can do to be able to address this at scale, to prompt people to let us know? Because I, because I don't have the reach that DPW has with its water bills. My colleagues and I don't have the reach that DPW has with its water bills. We should be letting every citizen know, if you have a defective lid, let us know and we will replace it.
Yes, I could take that question. Richard Loenig, and Deputy Director. So yes, we can include some type of message on water bills going out to customers. And we also just launched our newsletter as well, so that information is going out to the public. So we can look at adding that information in there, too, for the next issue, which will be coming out in the next few weeks.
How many people are in that newsletter at this point?
About twenty-one thousand right now.
All right, we've got two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand households in the city. We need to reach them all.
And that is the goal, too, is to reach everybody through the newsletter and through our various outreach efforts right now. So yes, we'll, we'll take a look at that.
Okay, great. Madam Chair, I have other questions. Shall I continue?
We're going to get back to you, Councilman.
Okay.
I'm going to go, at our August, at our August hearing, I uplifted one of the solutions that was listed within a Less Waste, Better Baltimore Plan. It was about the construction of a series of decentralized mini RFs, mini MRFs around the city, which would give us more control over recycling and would lessen the travel to transport our recyclable materials to the WMRA's MRF in Elk Ridge. The plan stated that the city could expect a full build-out of the mini MRF program with sixteen facilities across the city. Acting Bureau Head, Moore Jackson, you did alert the committee that the agency has requested or had requested funding through the capital budget and through an ARPA proposal, but did not receive a response from the administration yet. Has DPW received a response at this time?
We, we did receive some, some ARPA funding, but not for this particular project. We did receive ten million dollars of ARPA funding for solid waste facilities to modernize the bulk operation, also our residential drop-off centers, and some other improvements to facilities. But this particular project was not successful at this time, but we will be requesting it again in the next capital budget. We did receive money from the state for a east-side transfer station. We are in the process of, we, doing a landfill assessment of the Bowley's Lane, closed landfill, so that we could potentially have the site there. So we received four million dollars for that. That will help us with, with recycling, the same as the Northwest Transfer Station, and also will assist with the Small Hallers Program.
I appreciate you saving me a question about the East Baltimore Transfer Station, because I was definitely going to ask you about that. So thank you on that one. There's going to be a new recycling drop-off location within Northwest Baltimore. And this is going to allow residents to drop off recycling during the weeks where their recycling is not scheduled. What community engagement strategies have you guys used so far to inform residents of the new drop-off site?
So we have, it was in our newsletter, also our social media, and also sent out to all the council people and the, the community presidents in that neighborhood. So this is a new recycling center. It's at the Glenn Fire Station on Cross Country and Glenn Avenue. We actually started November this week. So that is up and running, and residents can drop their recycling off there on their off week. That area is Week A, so during Week B, they are, they can drop their recycling off at that center, the Glenn Fire Station at Glenn Avenue and Cross Country.
It was previously reported, and this was specifically within the FY23 Board of Estimates Agency detail item, that one reason that we had a consistent decrease in recycling tonnage collected was the inconvenience for residents to have to drop off their recyclables. Do you believe that this additional location is going to have a substantial impact on recycling rates within that area and be able to take burden off of our drivers and laborers?
That's the goal. We're hoping that if, you know, if people are unable to wait for us to come during the bi-weekly recycling, that they will drop it off. And we, we are there Tuesday through Saturday, eight to two, for, to collect that recycling.
At our August hearing, DPW noted that route optimization and analysis of those results would conclude in December. The budget did include six-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars for route optimization technology. Can you give us any type of status? Are we on track to complete route optimization by next month? And following the analysis, when can the council, residents, relevant stakeholders expect route alterations to be implemented?
We, we are working, we will have the report from Rubicon by December. So they initially, they gave us a, a draft that we had to review and send back to them. So they are promising to have it to us in a couple of weeks, the final. So yes, we'll have that by December, the information. Now, when we're going to, I'm sorry, your second part of the question?
Regarding implementation.
Implementation. We won't know about implementation until we get the final report and what it, and what it tells us, or what the needs are.
It's great to hear that you all are on track. I'm looking forward to learning more about implementation. To shift to an item that was mentioned within a recent recycling report about high staff, high staff and turnover within routine services. What efforts do you have in place to, say, capture knowledge and ensure there are no gaps in services due to a lack of experience or understanding?
So for the drive, the drivers, that's where the routing software comes in. We do have the routing software on the trucks right now, and they are using it. So it'll, it helps them navigate through, through the routes. And then also supervisors and the, the laborers on the truck also assist with helping.
No, and thank you, Yvonne. Jason Mitchell, Director, Public Works, for the record. To add to that, we are expanding our route software as well. So currently, right now, we're operating within our, our garbage trucks, our trash containers, but we are expanding that into our street sweeping program, our corner can program, our recycling program, our bulk program. With the idea, not only that we can be as efficient as possible from a technology and operations standpoint, but to your point, a newer driver who's working the route, now they have the optimization, too, and the software on, on their dashboard to be able to get through that route, meaning I'll be able to know to turn left, right, up, down, and that software will, will guide me through that route. So if I'm able to operate the equipment properly and safely, the route optimization will tell me what my route would be. And that's a significant improvement, because now we're not using paper routes. There's less opportunity for error, if you will, because you're following, it's almost like Google Maps, right? If you, if you're trying to go to point A, point V, it'll tell you which way to go. And if you just follow that, you normally reach your destination. This optimization and this Rubicon software does exactly that for drivers, which allows them to be orientated and get familiar and have less errors on the routes because they're using technology to, to guide them.
Thank you both. I have one additional question before I shift back to my colleagues. Baltimore City is home, is fortunate to be home, to a number of world-class institutions. Morgan State University being one of them. Morgan State University is one of the top five institutions graduating the highest number of Black engineers nationwide, and is the largest producer of Black engineers in the state of Maryland. At our May oversight hearing, the Bureau of Water and Wastewater did highlight that the Office of Engineering and Construction had one-hundred-and-fifty total funded positions with a vacancy rate of seventeen percent. I want to know, especially in a time where the public sector is struggling with recruitment and retention, how is DPW actively collaborating with Morgan State to attain engineers and minimize our city's brain drain?
Good morning. Joseph Cabeda, Water, Wastewater Bureau. I'll start with a response, and then perhaps our Equity Officer, Marco, can elaborate. We have hired several Morgan State graduates over the years. We have, we've also met with graduating students to communicate to them about the opportunities within DPW. Granted, this is not something that is an established routine as far as our recruiting effort, but that is the direction that we're going in, is to make sure that we are constantly engaged with faculty and with graduating students at Morgan State. Various individuals within DPW have board memberships with the civil environment, the civil engineering department, for instance, such as myself. So that gives us an avenue and access to students and faculty to make sure that we are collaborating.
Good morning. Marco Merrick, the Chief of Equity and Environmental Justice in the Department of Public Works. And your question is pretty timely in that we have already engaged a partnership with Morgan State University. I'm former faculty in the School of Global Journalism and Communication. However, we have forged a partnership with Morgan State University's School of Community Health and Policy that is enabling research for us, also giving us the opportunity to provide insight with Morgan's health, with the School of Public Health, as it relates to the work, the research that's being done, and also the projects that we're doing in DPW to bring services to our, to our customers. Additionally, understanding that we have this great resource and that incredible School of Engineering at Morgan State University had a conversation with Assistant to President, Dr. Don Terry Veal, and just spoke with him again yesterday about creating a pipeline, because it certainly will be a partnership for us that will be beneficial both for Morgan and for DPW. So that is a talk and an action item that is really on our front burner.
And Sheriff McCray, I just wanted to say, for the Morgan State University, it is, it is incumbent upon us to really, we're talking about a potential MOU in that partnership so that those students not only have an opportunity at employment, but as they go through their studies, you know, have an emphasis and focus on, on this type of utility, understanding that this is work that you can do not just locally. This is, this national, international work. Everywhere you have in a normal civilization is a water, sewer, and storm system. And so we recognize that this is something that many folks aren't exposed to. They're thinking bridges and roads, and what we want to do is expose them to this. So we, we're taking our future partnership with the Morgan State University very seriously, understanding that we want, want to attract that talent to come to us, to nurture them, and expose them to this, this great industry. So we're excited.
May I add just one more thing, Director? In that our proposed program called ECO Ambassador Citizen Science Program will also enable opportunities for current students in the engineering program to start with projects and assignments that they may be working on while they're students. This will also give the students a hands-on experience and insight about the dynamic opportunities in DPW, so that ideally, these students may be very well Baltimore residents who are attending Morgan State University.
I look forward to that action item coming into fruition. One thing that I loved is when, this is a separate Baltimore City agency. When I was out with DOT, there was a young man, and he was an intern within DOT. And he was from Morgan State University. So I want to make sure that all of our agencies, as often as possible, especially with these jobs, especially with these jobs, are partnering with the institutions that we have here. And that it is a priority. And it's great to know that we have relationships and folks are sitting on boards. Let's make sure we, I love that it's an action item. I want to see it come into fruition. I'm going to get back to you, and thank you all for answering the question. Councilman Conway, did you have any other questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one, and that is with regard to dirty street issues. I know I'm not the only one that deals with these issues, but, you know, just as an example, there'll be a given street where folks litter, trash is spilled everywhere. There'll be a complaint that goes out to the department. Typically, we get out there in a reasonable amount of time, clean up that street, and the next day, it looks the same way. I'm really curious about how we've thought about addressing that issue more permanently. I think, you know, we, we, of course, can respond, but I'm really curious about how the department thinks about addressing these things so that we don't always find ourselves trying to play catch-up to an issue that doesn't seem to go away.
That's an excellent question. So DPW is in the final stages of finalizing our BLIT remediation plans for the next year. And, and we're looking at it from, I would say, from a, we call it a four-E approach, equity, eradication, education, and enforcement. We believe that, to your point, someone throws illegal dumping, we pick it up, next day it's back again. There's a, there's a, you know, there's a lot of historic norms around that that we have to break so that we understand how folks, you know, really want to truly dispose of their trash. And so we look at equity in all we do, right? But with that, from an eradication standpoint, making sure that we're picking it up and making sure that it doesn't grow, so picking it up fast is critical. And not only reactive after a service request, but proactively picking up things in communities that are less engaged, if you will. But we understand education is a big component. Some of our residents don't know about the drop-off centers. Some of our residents don't know about bulk trash, and you can call three-one-one and get it picked up. Some folks don't know that I lost my garbage can. If I call three-one-one, I can, I can get a replacement, or I have a lid issue, I can get a replacement. So education is going to be... So education is going to be really critical, but also doing that in partnership with community, right? For us, not just to be the sole picking up, how do we engage in community so our community can clean, help clean it up? And we support that effort. So that partnership is going to be really critical. And then the last, but not least, when those things doesn't work, enforcement and working with our partners around enforcement. And so we're creating a full plan on that, understanding we're doing the four-E approach to it. So it's not just how fast we can pick it up, it's how fast we can pick it up, how fast we can educate, how fast can we change that behavior so that this systemic issue doesn't continue to occur? And that's what we're looking to do.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I also appreciate you brought up illegal dumping. Of course, that is included in this consideration, but I was actually talking about just litter, litter particularly in low-income black communities, low-income black districts is where we see it most often. And I agree with you, education is certainly an integral part of resolving the issue, getting folks to take pride in their community. I certainly take pride in mine. And so, you know, I'm really curious about what efforts we're taking there, how we're looking at that problem, how we're dissecting the problem, because there is a difference between illegal dumping and litter on the street. And litter, it, you know, I don't know if it was yesterday or the day before, I was out in the community and just trash everywhere, in the tree pits, in the trees. And, you know, even if we do have a crew come out there and clean that up, like I said earlier, it'll be right back in a day or two. So I'm, I'm really, really, I want us to really begin thinking about, of course, enforcement is part of the response. Of course, us getting out there and cleaning that up as soon as humanly possible is great as well. But I also wonder if that is reinforcing the problem and what we can do, of course, to respond because we want our communities, we want our city to be clean and look clean. But we also want people to respect their neighborhoods, to respect their homes, to respect our city. So, you know, how we're thinking about that education piece, how we're thinking about that partnership piece with community organizations and otherwise, I think is really, really, really important. I can tell you, certainly in my district, there are a lot of neighborhood associations and groups of neighborhood associations that want the help trying to clean up and don't necessarily want to count on the city to come out every time someone drops litter on the street, but need little help, you know, trash bags, brooms, pickers, things like that. And so I'm really curious, you know, what, how we look at that comprehensively, how we divide and conquer those problems. Certainly, illegal dumping is one of them, but really just literally litter in our streets is something that we struggle with. And I'm sure if we calculate how much time and money we spend on exactly that issue, it's not going to be a small amount. So just urge the department, urge you guys to think about that and start dissecting that problem for the different approaches that we can have to address it for the long term.
Let's thank you. In our plan, you will see us really approach that in a very intentional manner, how we engage with the schools, children. You know, usually your litter bugs become your illegal dumpers, right? How do we engage at a young age? And then two, when we do, to your point, many communities, they don't want our help. They just need a little partnership so that they can get the work done. And in our, you'll see a lot in our volunteer program that we're rolling out, you know, as far as helping, to your point, you know, litter pickup gloves, bags, us coming and Yvonne's team coming in and pick up afterwards. So it's a comprehensive approach in that so that we can help every neighborhood, no matter where they are starting at, there's a way for folks to engage and really partner so that we can keep Baltimore and keep that charm in Baltimore.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. DPW is lucky that they don't have to hear me harangue them about parking enforcement. DOT not so much. But they could attest to you that I continue to dig in into the weeds of how we can improve parking enforcement in the city. And I continue to be shocked by all of the layers of the onion that I have to peel away, the most recent of which is being told by DOT Safety Division that all parking enforcement is routed through the Department of Public Works, that every time a citizen makes a report to 311 about a parking problem, that that has to go from 31, that that goes from 311 to DPW and then from DPW directly to DOT's individual parking enforcement agents. This results often in me making a parking complaint and it not getting dispatched until four to six hours after the complaint has been made. And this makes it ineffective to conduct parking enforcement. I see two different DOT, DPW employees shaking their heads in different directions, one up and one side, up and down, one side to side. So who can tell me what's going on here and where the line of truth begins and ends with this?
Thank you, Councilman Yosef Cabeda, Water, Wastewater Bureau. The, what I can do is I can confirm what you said and just maybe highlights just some basic info, which is 311, call comes in, and then from that point on, we have what we call Control One within DPW, a team of dispatchers that are responsible for creating the work orders within City Works for water, wastewater, and sewer-related matters. That same team also does handle, based my understanding, some of the parking violations. That is parking violation calls. So as far as optimizing the process, I think that's something that we can look at to see what we can streamline to make sure that that does not get lost, that those requests do not linger. And, you know, we can provide you more information once we see what the best route would be.
Thanks. That, who, where is Control One? Who runs Control One? I don't know.
Control One is a section within the Utility Maintenance Division in the Bureau of Water and Wastewater.
Who's the chief? Is there a chief of Control One?
There is a superintendent of Control One.
Who's the superintendent?
I'm sorry?
Who is that?
Bruce Jones.
Yeah, look, we can't effectively run parking enforcement in this, we cannot, as a city, deliver effective parking enforcement services if they're not immediate in their response, basically. I mean, like, I need to, if we have boots on the ground doing parking enforcement and they're not even having things dis, I mean, we need like a 15 to 20-minute turnaround time from the time the call comes in until the time a person is showing up at the site. Like, bus riders in the city of Baltimore cannot afford to have their bus stops and bus lanes blocked for two and three and four and eight hours at a time. And the same thing for bike lanes and, you know, a lot of other things. You know, people park in crosswalks, people park on sidewalks. We have a whole multitude of things that are a problem to anybody, anywhere, anytime, and they have to go out immediately. It's just not acceptable any other way. So we're going to follow up on this or what?
We'll connect with our partners in DOT and look at ways that we can improve those efficiencies. So we'll sit down with Director Sharkey and his team and look at our process and see how we can make it more efficient. So we can report out on that, maybe give us a month so we can sit down and have that conversation.
We've got Tavon Braxton here from DOT. He's, he's, I think, the closest person to the division that we're going to, we'll need to work with, I think.
Absolutely. We'll reach out to all of our partners in DOT.
All right, great. Thanks for being here, Tavon. Thanks, everybody. I appreciate it. Madam Chair, I think more or less covers all the things that were really concerning to me. I do just want to say thanks to everybody for everything that you continue to do. Look, my, my idea of good government is not responsiveness to elected officials. It is effectiveness at delivering the goods on a day-to-day basis. And everybody here does both. And so that's, that's the real win right there. And so just thank you all for everything that you're doing and continue to do with excellence.
Councilman, I just wanted to follow up on the backlog issue.
Yes.
As of the 3rd of November, we had 24 in the queue and 12 have already been received approval.
And that's for?
For, that's for the stormwater credits, any and all.
Any and all?
Yes, sir.
That including, what you call it, rain barrels you're talking about?
Yes.
Rain barrels and other things? 24?
24 as of the 3rd of November, and 12 had already been reviewed and are scheduled for approval.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman, is that timeline good for you? That follow-up timeline?
I mean, if we can get this Control One issue worked out, is that what you're asking about or the stormwater thing?
The meeting timeline, he said about a month. Is that, is that good?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Let's be clear. Thank you. I appreciate it. I want to have this resolved in a month. Like, this has got to be fixed. This is a daily problem for people in the city and something's, like, we got to have a, we have, I have to have a solution in a month. I mean, that sounds okay.
Director, can you make sure that you connect with Director Sharkey within two weeks to have that meeting as opposed to within, you know, up to a month, within two weeks and then follow up with Councilman Dorsey?
Yes, we'll try to do it as quick as possible. My concern that I know a lot of staff takes off during the holiday period, and I was just keeping that into consideration. But to this committee's point, we'll move forward with, as fast as possible with DOT to try, try to find those efficiencies by, you know, next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Director, can you get somebody hit me up about that trip out to Lock Raven today?
Say that again?
Get somebody email me about that trip out to Lock Raven?
Yes.
Yeah, I want to get that scheduled.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman.
I'm trying to get that on the schedule for a while.
Look, I see you had to get it in. I'm not too mad. When we, we're going to move on to public testimony. Members of the public, you're going to have three minutes each to provide your testimony. As a reminder, if you are in the council chamber and would like to testify, please sign in and check the appropriate box on the sign-in sheet just outside the door. If you have joined us through WebEx and you would like to testify, please use the raise hand function to let us know. At this time, I do not believe that we have anyone within the chambers who signed up to testify. So we are going to see if we have any attendees. We have quite a few. I'm not sure if they're here for this hearing, for, and give them the opportunity to testify. We're going, we do, I don't see any hands quite yet, but we do have one caller. Caller, we're going to briefly unmute you. If you would like to testify, please state your first and your last name, the organization that you're with, and you will have three minutes. And we're going to double-check one more time on WebEx just to be sure. So that is going to, that's going to conclude public testimony for this hearing. We do not have any public testimony. Bureau head?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I did have the response to your question before you close out for bulk. Currently, you cannot request it online, but I did get confirmation from 311 that they can get it up and running rather quickly. So I'm going to work with them today to see when they can get it, get it back online and we'll let you know. But they said they can do it rather quickly.
That's great. And I appreciate you guys. Thanks for following up on that one. I want to thank everyone for joining today. That is going to, we did conclude public testimony. And the hearing on LO 22-0019 is now in recess. We will have future meetings. We're going to continue with the quarterly legislative oversight just to make sure that people are, our residents are informed. Thanks all for joining. We are now going to start the hearing on LO 22-0027, Quarterly Legislative Oversight Hearing, Department of Transportation, for the purpose of calling for quarterly oversight hearings for the Department of Transportation regarding agency operations, staffing, safety of fleet, facilities and equipment, and other responsibilities to improve the transparency and accountability in serving the residents of Baltimore City. We're going to start with a presentation from the Department of Transportation. I may ask DOT to pause their presentation periodically so committee members can ask questions. And after the presentation and committee questions, we're going to move on to public testimony. And at this time, we're going to hear from the Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Chair, as well as esteemed council members. Thank you for having us here. Excited to talk again, so welcome, or thank you for welcoming me. My mistake. So let's kick it off. We got a presentation that Liam worked really hard on, emailed it to me at like 1:00 AM, like two nights ago, so. All right, yeah, go to the next. All right, one, yeah, there we go. So basically, agency overview. DOT's mission is to improve the transportation infrastructure for out the city for multiple modes of transportation. So cars is not, is the fourth on the multimodal hierarchy. So of course pedestrians, transit riders, bicycles, and vehicles. So it's a quite large municipal agency with over 1,100 employees. So very interesting, large, lots of capital infrastructure, lots of partnerships with other agencies, very large. So go to the next. So just a couple of divisions. Of course, we have the Administrative Division. We have the ATVest Division, which is the arm which has a large number of both speed and road light cameras. So we have over 300 total cameras of various types in the city, including the 83 camera. Also, we have the Complete Streets Section. Again, Complete Streets was landmark legislation that we this year passed the, or I guess enacted the regulations for, which is really a mode shift or a mental shift on how streets are used, how streets are interacting with the community. So very important piece, which then falls into and goes into our other, into every other, permeates every other section and every other division and how they react in the future to make the streets more usable for everyday residents. Conduit Division is also here. Conduit is a huge division that is rarely thought of because it's under the ground, but we lease out conduit system to BGE and telecom providers, a very large system, just past, I believe, the non-sale of it passed yesterday. So that is, you know, very interesting, huge division, very rarely thought of. Maintenance Division is one of the biggest divisions, lots of people there, lots and lots and lots of work and infrastructure out of that division in maintenance. So Kendall is the chief of that division, a lot of hard work there. You know, just, I could probably do a presentation just on the Maintenance Division for hours. So very cool. The Planning Division, also, we've, in the last four years, we've doubled the number of planners, which is a start. So planning is an important piece of making, you know, complete streets decisions into the future. But the Planning Division also includes the Transit Division, the multimodal folks. So we have a very active scooter program in this city as well as the bicycle program. So pretty interesting, all the different things happening there. Tech Division, just transportation, engineering and construction. Bmal is the chief, uh, which repairs the roadways and the alleys. So lots and lots of repairs there, for sure. Uh, big dollar value, so one, the biggest projects going on right now is the Triple Bridge. Uh, just large, multi-multi-million dollar projects coming through. Of course, we also have the Traffic Division, Will Haynes is the chief. Uh, and that's, of course, to look for the efficient flow of traffic, uh, efficient and safe flow of traffic throughout the city. Uh, so another very key division there. Keep going. Safety Division, that is the crossing guards and the TOs. Uh, very important division to, uh, both, uh, make sure the right-of-way is used properly and safely. Right-of-way services, also for a large number of permits that come through for various reasons throughout the city. And then keep going. Towing, of course, that's the tow yard, plus some, the removal of some abandoned and illegally parked vehicles. We also have here Contract Administration and Civil Rights Section, which is, uh, helps move the paperwork along, but also does certain work. So Civil Rights Division always falls under a Contract Administration when you do federal jobs. So we do have a, a large federal allocation of funds, which requires a large number of work, um, you know, requirements. So we do all those things to really make sure that we make the feds, uh, make sure the federal paperwork is on point. One thing to mention too as well is the ADA Division. So the ADA Division is getting staffed up, it is now has five people. So the full, Valerie Lacour will be the chief. Uh, so that will be the section that will focus solely on ADA and making sure that ADA is, practices and policies are followed throughout the city. So I'm pretty excited that that's continuing. So we've got Valerie, three engineers, four engineers, five, six, and then an age. So that's gonna move along, but it's gonna, again, have to be the same type of thing that those practices, uh, get permeated throughout the agency. Uh, just a couple other quick facts. So we're the only local government in Maryland that's responsible for maintaining, uh, all of our roads, or nearly all of our roads. So the only roads that we are not really responsible for is pretty much 95, um, and the, and 895, so. It's ours. Yeah, um, although now the State Police does patrol 83 and 295 now. But we, as a city, uh, maintain all the other roads except for the toll roads. Uh, so of course, uh, we have increased autonomy compared to other places. Uh, we have over 2,000 miles of road, seven miles of interstate highway, 298 plus, you know, 298 bridges and culverts, 3,600 miles of sidewalks, you know, 456 miles of alleys, 7,200 streetlights. Quite a large, um, infrastructure package here, just a lot going on in the city. All right. Going. This is just talking a little bit about the capital backlog. The capital backlog is, I think, over 1.3 billion, and I believe it to be even higher than that as we continue to, you know, inflation goes up, and as we do more and more work, uh, I believe that number will continue to increase. So the capital backlog is quite high. The needs of this city's capital needs are amazingly high, uh, across the board, all types. Uh, so that's, you know, just a lot, so. So we also get federal funding for major road projects. Uh, in the past, we've gotten 15 million in annually in transportation bonds, county transportation bonds, which comes through the state. So the state money that we did get in the past would be, we would get a loan and then pay back over time through the money that the state gives us. Uh, we also have local funding in some years. We go to the next. Uh, this is a little bit of a look at the total HUR sent to the city from the state. HUR being road money. Uh, so back around the time of the Great Recession, we were greatly cut as a city, uh, on how much road money we get. Very big cuts. Uh, so I guess 2010 is that, so that's the last 12 years. We've been getting, what is that, Liam, 70, 80 less million, maybe even more?
Cumulatively, we've lost out on over $900 million in HUR.
Yeah, so if we had been kept at that same level, we would, we've lost out on $900 million. Uh, and of course, inflation is still a thing, so, uh, the amount of money that we get in should be increasing for the next couple of years, but that, those percentages are not, um, set in stone forever. And I think that's a very key piece, that the city is, does have state roads. So Harford Road, all these other roads are state roads. Uh, the, they are funded by state revenues, and the city always needs to fight to keep its portion of those revenues. And so we have fought for that and want to continue with that. This shows the capital allocations, uh, for the department with the big hit during the Great Recession, uh, and some improvements over the, the past. But again, the, the needs are great in the department. Uh, just a little look at some policy efforts. We have some, uh, two-speed cameras now on I-83. So if you are a driver on I-83, you will notice how much slower. Uh, and I personally notice it when I go up to yoga. I just notice how slow everybody drives on 83, uh, which is pretty cool. So I don't, you know, when I head back down south, I don't get stressed out on my drive back down 83. So it's pretty cool that, uh, everybody drives slow for almost the whole corridor. Uh, and I think that's really was the point of the program. Let's see. So we have those two cameras. That's a lot of, uh, man, Liam, my eyes, man.
Yeah, so, um, some of the other, just to highlight here, and, uh, we're tagging team here. Um, in addition to 83, which was authorized in the 2021 session, we had a really tremendous session in 2022. Just as a reminder, um, we were authorized the use of, um, bus lane enforcement cameras. That project is underway. Uh, we were also, also given special authority, um, to lower speed limits in select cases. Um, and then really the landmark legislation, uh, that is gonna have a major impact on, on DOT over the next several, uh, years is our reversal of the highway user revenue cuts.
Yeah, and so, yeah, thank you, Liam, I, I'm able to see now, I pulled onto the page. So it, it is, our legislative wins at the state level have been extremely strong the last couple of years. So, uh, in partnership with the other local counties to pass these types of legislations just for the city, but also, uh, in concert to improve the situation of MTA with the Transit Safety and Investment Act, which is extremely important. Uh, so it's, you know, the, the city and transit and other things have become more of an issue over the last two years for the positive. So I'm pretty proud of how much improved, uh, improved wins the city's had at Annapolis. Of course, we're gonna continue, but I am pleased with the progress. Uh, we got a couple new policies here. Uh, of course ceremonial street signs, uh, makes that a little bit more of a streamlined process. Uh, public traffic calming requests, which is actually, uh, really brings down the, um, difficulties or the layers of bureaucracy that residents have to get. So there's probably, you know, 50 things that have to be met, I'm making a number up, that to, to get certain traffic calming, specifically speed humps. We took as many as we could out. So in the past, we required, uh, community associations to sign off. We also had, required a large number of people to fill out, uh, you know, to fill out or sign on the line, which is, of course, very difficult when you have vacancies or absentee people, uh, to get that number. So we've really made that a lot easier. Um, and excitingly, we've, we've kind of been enacting that policy or using that policy over the last two years. And excitingly, this year, we're up to, as of right now, 165 speed humps installed. That's the most we've had, at least in recorded history. So we had 121 in 2012, uh, and we've never come anywhere even close to that as well. So compared to the last couple of years, the amount of speed humps has increased dramatically. So we're excited that we kind of have this going and that the people asking for speed humps in the future will, will be able to get more of them, very exciting. Curbside commercial, uh, this is in the drafting revisions. Liam, can you talk about this a little bit?
So yes, this is, uh, the outdoor dining policy that is actually publicly posted for 30-day public comment. The public comment period, um, is active until November 14th. To date, we've received over 1,000 public comments. And Baltimore City DOT prides itself in really being a leader, uh, within the municipal agencies in terms of pushing new policies through the Administrative Procedures Act that the city council adopted last term. So, um, if you talk to Department of Legislative Reference, they know that DOT is one of the pioneers. Um, and our outdoor dining, uh, policy is, is one that has gotten a tremendous amount of interest. So we're actually using the APA process to build an even stronger policy. We're gonna be using the public comments to make further edits and then in all likelihood repost again for 30-day public comment.
Thank you, Liam. Uh, also, if you just jump to the dockless vehicle program, uh, we have a large scooter ridership. If you've been anywhere in the city, uh, I'm seeing tons of private scooters now too, not just the rented scooter. We manage the rented scooter program, and we've added lots of, I guess, scooter parking spots, so to speak. Uh, scooter slash bike parking lots and across the city, as you've seen. So it's, it's pretty cool, and that's been funded through the revenue from the, um, scooter companies. So it does increase multimodalism throughout the city. Uh, also, interestingly enough, there was a pilot of personal delivery devices up on the Morgan State campus, which is basically pizza robots, I guess? Robots that bring you pizza? Which sounds amazing, but I, I do have some concerns about them moving up and down our right-of-way, uh, when, especially when some of these are what, 400 pounds, Liam?
Yeah, so our very talented, um, shared mobility manager, Meg Young, is really taking the lead on, uh, coming up with strong regulations that are gonna work for the city of Baltimore, a highly urbanized area. We wanna make sure our sidewalks, like, we wanna make sure we're embracing new technologies, but not at the expense of the safety to pedestrians and, and, um, the availability to use our public right-of-way.
Yeah, so we'll definitely be, you know, coming in, coming to discuss that more in the future, specifically when it gets more developed out. But it is, uh, it is interesting that there's pizza robots. All right, uh, just a couple, agency milestones. Uh, 83, Central Avenue Streetscape ongoing, Edmondson Avenue Bridge, Harford Road, Triple Bridges, and then, of course, the speed humps that we, uh, installed, which I'm excited about. We've also been the recipient of two grants. I really love our partnership with MTA. So, um, the thing I always, before, I've been for the city for 17 years, maybe 18, I don't even know anymore, was our partnership with MTA always seemed to be lacking. You know, MTA is the main source of transportation for the most in need of this city. 29% of people or households in the city do not own a car, they own zero cars. So the bus is their default way to get places. So I've been really working with MTA and enjoyed it the last three years, both with, uh, Kevin and then Holly, the two administrators, to, to come together and try our best to be more supportive of each other. And it's, it's worked, uh, in, in many ways, uh, including two RACE grants. So we've got two federal RACE grants, uh, two years in a row, which is absolutely amazing. One for an east-west corridor, which will speed buses from east to west, uh, on current existing routes, routes, the blue and the orange. And then also, uh, a RACE grant this year for the Charles Street Corridor to improve multimodal use, uh, near Penn Station. So I think that these are, you know, great things. So we are starting to really work with them towards making sure that the buses can get where they need to go quickly and efficiently for those people that are so reliant on that. Uh, and of course, that doesn't even discuss, you know, we're talking about the need in Baltimore, but that doesn't even talk about the long-term greenhouse gas effects of, uh, decreasing automobile reliance. Uh, also, yeah, so we'll go to the next. Uh, we have a number of meetings and dashboards that we work together on, uh, to try to improve the internal operations. Pretty exciting, uh, well, sometimes it's exciting, but a lot of times it's, you know, it's hard work. But it is cool to have everybody working together off the same sheet of music and, and working. So just excited about the team. So the, the chief's here, not everybody's here, it's just really good folks and love working with them. They really put out, um, they, they put out their efforts, man. So, you know, just, again, we work together, we talk about the data, but a lot of it's just us to communicate and make sure we, we're looking at some of the bigger picture issues. All right, let's see.
Director, I can speak to this a little bit, 'cause we, we kind of threw this slide and it was really interesting. Um, again, this is from the, um, Shared Mobility Office. Um, and what we're looking at here is the dockless scooter program. And a lot of times we get questions, we get inquiries, and I know you guys get inquiries from the public, like, you're putting the bike lanes in, we don't see anybody using them. Well, the great thing about the dockless scooter program is you, we know for sure how many people are riding them. So if you see here, we set a goal of, um, trips taken per month at 110,000. We exceeded that, over 130,000, um, rides, uh, monthly per date. So that's probably a rolling average. Um, trips per vehicle, um, for these private companies to turn a profit, they need, um, to hit multiple trips per vehicle. Two trips per vehicle is what we set the goal at. Um, we're almost there, it's at 1.9. Um, and then vendor compliance in terms of equitable distribution. Um, that goal was set at 90% compliance, and we're currently at 93% compliance. And it looks like we did issue one citation to, to help encourage compliance.
Yeah, so Liam, just to mention about the scooter program, where we license the scooter companies, uh, they have to put, you know, at a certain time in the morning, each morning, scooters or bicycles at particular equity zones. And it's not just a zone, it's a street or almost a location that's required. So we have some pretty cool software that monitors that. And so they're, you know, like I said, over 93% compliance with that, which is strong. Uh, it really allows those scooters to go out. It's not just, hey, let's all only put scooters in downtown in Canton. It's, let's move them out a little bit, and it's still very successful, um, in a lot of those places. Just a couple other achievements, we worked to tow a bunch of vehicles out of Hurry Run recently. We also work with, uh, MOHS. We're also working really hard with PABC, and PABC is really taking the baton on this for electric vehicle regulations in the city, which is super cool. And I'm excited about how hard Pete is doing work on that. Uh, continued support for many public events, uh, and, and the public safety agencies. Uh, and also, we had a big illegal sign blitz this summer. But we just need illegal sign blitzes all the time, and now the campaigns are over, we should double our efforts, right? So, uh, yeah. Um, that's the main bulk of the, of the presentation. Let me, I, I did not introduce my staff at the beginning, I'm sorry, got a little nervous there. So let me just introduce the staff real quick, uh, and I'll go this way and around. So, uh, here's Tish Griffin, she is Deputy Director of Administration. Theo Nagongang, uh, Deputy Director of Planning and Policy. Bmal, he is Chief of the Tech Division. Tavon, Deputy Director, Tavon Braxton, Deputy Director of Operations. Marley Cardona-Maz, Chief of Press Affairs. Liam, Legislative, Legislative Thumbs Up Guy. Head over to this side. Vobia Kilo, Chief of Staff. Kendall Abu-Hukim, I'm sure you all know him, that's the sharpest dressed man in city government, sorry, Mark. It's just, yeah. Phil Mellerson, uh, Chief of ATVES. Clea Baumhafer, uh, Chief, or, not Chief Engineer, uh, Engineer Supervisor, Traffic Division. And Torena Galloway, uh, Chief of Community Engagement. So, oh, and Damian back over here, Deputy Director of Traffic. So quite the squad, um, really hard workers here, so, uh, just proud of their efforts. So, and, and thank you for, uh, you know, letting me shout out their names.
Thank you, Director Sharkey, I appreciate, um, a lively presentation. I'm gonna get straight into questions. Um, the first question is gonna be around strategic. The first question is going to be around strategic planning. In April, DOT adopted Baltimore City's Strategic Highway Safety Plan for the purpose of achieving zero roadway deaths and serious injuries by 2030. How is DOT currently working to operationalize the plan?
Great. That's exciting that we're, you know, doing these types of things, especially in concert with MDOT and the state. Theo, can you jump in on this one a little bit and just kind of talk about what your guys are doing?
Sure.
Yes, sir. Whatever you prefer.
I can actually, I guess, jump on this mic. Thank you, Steve, Councilwoman Gray. Part of, couple of things that we've done in order to comply with the highway safety plan.
Sir, but before you start, can you just state your first and last name for the rocker?
Of course. My name is Theo Ngonggang. And I am the Deputy Director for Planning and Policy. And my portfolio also includes transit. So in order to comply with the highway safety plan that we have adopted back in spring of this year, a couple of things that we are doing. Number one is on our capital improvement program side, we are making sure that we have set aside a part of money in order for us to jump on what we call quick-build projects that really are projects that we design in-house in order to address issues of crash and safety in general in our intersection. So we have a way of literally identifying the most crash-prime areas in the city. And we go after them, trying to remain equitable on both the east and the west side of the city and identify the intersections that need geometric improvement, things that we can do quickly without having to really spend time on design with consultants outside of the city DOT forces. So that's one thing that we do. The other thing that we do also to make sure that the highway safety plan is actually, stays accurate is that we do have a monthly meeting that is initiated by our own team. We have assigned a specific planner to be kind of like our safety czar, Shayna Rose, and she is the one managing those meetings that include not just city DOT, but city agencies as well that are part of just making sure that recommendations of the safety highway plan are actually being maintained. And if and when there are issues that come up, that monthly gathering really, at least tries to address them as they come. Those are two things that we are doing, at least to keep the highway safety plan updated and current.
Yeah, thank you, Theo. And so besides just the planning and the oversight, it is something where the long-term, I guess, design practices of the agency will have to follow along with certain design standards and things that it recommends to for increasing safety. Some of them are pretty simple or knowledgeable, but some of them are a little bit more technically complicated. So Graham and the traffic people will input them. So a lot of it will have to be infused into the long-term capital plans for these corridors and these areas. But it is exciting that we are doing this process that is probably 20 years overdue. But we are working forwards, towards this.
Could you provide the committee with updates on your current roadway safety initiatives?
Sure. So I would say, of course, we talked about highway safety plan. That is a first and foremost portion to that. We also now have, when we do any roadway changes, we now push more and more of a complete streets mindset to that, which especially focuses on the pedestrian. So that would be shortened crossing distances to cross the street. So every single project that we do has to have more and more elements in the past that focus on pedestrians and the other, and the other folks, pedestrians, bicycles, and overall traffic safety than we did in the past. So a lot of times, when I first came to the city 17 years ago, it was, hey, all this traffic is here on this road. What are we doing to get the cars through quickly? We can't always just get the cars through quicker and quicker. We also have to look at the people that live in that neighborhood, as well as the number of accidents. So we, like Theo said, we do have quick-build. We look for the highest number of locations. And that's, of course, on large corridors. So large corridors, we will have to do quick-builds or longer geometric improvements. So large now amount of capital projects. Every time we do one of those long stretches, we have to go and improve the roadway safety greatly. We also have some geometric improvements throughout the city, which is intersections, five, five of the worst intersections, Bimal, five? Five. We have another project ongoing, five geometric improvements on there. I think that we really want to expand and expand that. That will always be reliant upon money. We also have the AtVest and red light camera programs that are successful in somewhat slowing. But there are places where people across the city do not drive well. So I will not, I will not, I'm not going to, I guess, say that we have good drivers in the city. And I'll say quite the opposite. The drivers in the city are pretty reckless. So I'm happy that we have over 300 cameras in the city to deter both, you know, red, running red lights, which is extremely dangerous, as well as over speeding, which is one of the main causes of crashes. So we also have that program. We also have, like I said, which again, doesn't cause as many crashes, but neighborhood traffic calming, most speed humps ever, at least in recorded history. So this goes back to 2010 when we have records. So most there. And then as well as, what else we got going? I think that's quite a bit. But just any other projects that we can think of besides dependent on funding? No, that's the bulk. But it's really not, it is dependent on funding and it's depending on large capital projects. So every large capital project needs to focus on that safety. And that's what we're moving more and more towards, but it still will be dependent on funds.
Thank you. I'm going to transition to staff and recruitment and retention before we get to other committee members for their questions. I'll start here. Can you provide the committee with an overview of your filled versus vacant positions? Specifically, how many vacant positions does DOT, did DOT have prior to the pandemic? How does the vacancy rate pre-COVID compare to your current vacancy rate? And what positions are you having the greatest difficulty recruiting for?
So I do not have exact numbers on the vacancies before and after. We can 100% get that to you. One thing that we've done over the years is done a lot of position changes and then filling the positions. So there are a lot of positions that, DOT had tons of vacancies even five to seven years ago. Just kept vacancies that it shouldn't have. So we have taken positions to create other positions. So creating, doubling the staff of the Traffic Division, doubling the staff of, or creating the ADA Division, doubling the number of planners. So we have taken a lot of vacancies, moved them over. We still have some very critical and difficult-to-hire functions. So of course, engineers has been difficult to hire, but it's improved lately. I think that traffic engineers, we've actually been able to hire pretty, you know, pretty well. Where do we have? One vacancy left there? That was, it was a big push for traffic engineers. One, two? One vacancy?
There are currently, you have interviews tomorrow.
Okay. I thought we hired more. We, oh, well, you got promoted. Okay. Gotcha. So we, yeah, she created a vacancy.
How many total vacancies do you guys have right now?
I do not know the total number. I was not prepared with that.
We can follow up with the councilwoman.
Okay, can you get us that, well, that one should be a pretty easy lift. Can you get that one to us by the close of business today? For Sophia, the other questions I have is how many vacant positions did DOT have prior to the pandemic? How does the vacancy rate pre-COVID compare to the current vacancy rate? And what positions are they having the greatest difficulty recruiting for?
And the other one is CDL drivers. That's by far the biggest issue.
Thank you, Director. What are your current strategic efforts to bolster recruitment and fill vacant, and fill the vacant positions that you do have?
So there's a, like, inter-agency work group with HR to improve CDL hiring. So of course, there's, that's a multi-layered process that I think has totally shifted. So in terms of post-pandemic, the world has really changed the trucking industry, the, everything else. So that is, that work group, we're really hoping for a lot more. In terms of other places, we're always working to fill these other vacancies, especially the hard-to-fill engineering spots. I feel pretty successful in most upper-level positions. It's just some very specific spots. We had a big problem with inspectors. That's improved, but always apt to be a problem again. So it seems to go in waves, except for CDL drivers. We could hire a million. We have work to get some more in-house folks trained with DPW, but that's going to be a long-term issue, is the drivers. Engineers is our other focus. We're always working, we're always trying to get people to talk to their friends to come work for the city or trying to steal people from, say, the other firms that maybe a person's looking for a different lifestyle or maybe looking for more leave time at their engineering thing. So that's probably the places where we've had the most concerns with the hiring.
Previously, just in the oversight hearing prior to this one in the DPW, let me get a little closer. Previously, in the DPW hearing just before yours, I highlighted that you guys, when we did a community engagement event, I was very happy to see that we had an intern that was with you, Clea, that was from Morgan State University. So I'm going to give you guys the same question that I gave DPW. We're fortunate to be home to a decent amount of world-class institutions, and that would include Morgan State University. They are one of the top five institutions graduating the highest number of Black engineers nationwide. Do you guys have an official partnership with Morgan State University?
Yes, we do. So we do have an official partnership with Morgan State that went to the board maybe four or five months ago. I think we have three or four engineers there or engineering students that work there. They work about 20 hours a week. And so they're great. They're traffic engineers. They're really energetic, smart, young folks. We're happy to have them. And I, you know, want to see how far we can expand it. We don't want to make it, we want to make sure that we can give each person a really good experience. But then also, hopefully, we can hope to hire them into the future. So that's sort of the goal. So, you know, have them there. The ones that really pick up, we bring on. Or try our best to bring on and make them work for us. So I'm totally excited about that program. We can only expand it so much to give them great experiences, but we want to make sure we continue that because it's, it is a great pipeline. So back when I was at DGS, we had a couple interns from Morgan's Architecture Program. I think three of them still might work in some capacity for DGS. So I'm happy to have the similar thing here where we have the traffic engineers coming in. We're seeing if there's some other places we can have them. Did we end up with one in another division, guys?
Not yet, but there is interest and Morgan, I'm like, is that number another?
Just for our staff who aren't familiar, just make sure you're using the mics so the public can hear.
My apologies. And my name's Clea Baumhofer, for the record. So we currently, I have three interns in the Traffic Division under me. And I know there was interest expressed by some of the other divisions in getting an intern for their division. And Morgan has sent us over a list of a few additional potential candidates that we're still looking into. Probably they would want to align with the semesters. They have an internship class for credit. So I think that's probably what we'll get some more.
And, yeah, and we'll also not, and so if they're, you know, really working out and really doing a great job, we have no problems keeping them on for summers or, you know, or winters or just keeping them on as long as they are still working, they are wanting to be part of, as long as they're students. And we do want to try to figure out ways to open up positions over time to hopefully bring them into the city full-time when they do graduate. So it is a very cool program and it has been successful because we've, Clea, Will, who's the chief, and everybody has actually invested in the quality of the program. So we actually even have an engineer there that's a former professor or something. So it does take a lot upfront, but it can pay big benefits at the back end. And which is something that I believe will have to happen in the city with CDL drivers. Really investing in folks to get them to the CDLs is my belief.
I believe it will pay. Often, what I want to make sure that we do is actually expand the program in partnership with Morgan State University and our other universities that are here. We don't have the vac, I don't have the vacancy number for DOT yet, but I know that there are likely opportunities across all divisions to make sure that we are providing opportunities for students within the city to gain expertise and make sure that they excel and make sure that they know that the city has jobs and careers especially that are available in all areas. So it is great and I'm very happy that you guys have an established partnership. Again, I just want to see it expanded. And I am, this is my last question regarding this section. As we are facing staffing challenges and higher employee turnover, knowledge capturing is critical to ensure that there are no gaps in service. DPW finalized the Knowledge Capture Policy for departing employees. The policy was implemented for 10-plus high-profile employees with 30-plus years of experience each. Does DOT have similar policies to ensure knowledge capture is occurring?
We have no actual formal policy. I'd love to see that formal policy. I think that we're, been trying to build up the staff to have another staff member ready. But that's an interesting idea that we, you know, definitely like to hear more about.
And I just wanted to say that our Chief of Staff here is working and spearheading efforts for a continuance of operations plan. And I think that that ties into what you're alluding to, Councilwoman. And if there's something specific, if we need to be more specific, I think we all here are familiar with the great mind that is Frank Murphy and his 40-plus years of knowledge. And I think that's kind of what you're talking about. We've got to make sure we capture as much of his knowledge as possible. So we're interested in talking about that further.
Which will, which will take me here. What's the total number of DOT employees that are eligible for retirement as of today?
So I'm actively, excuse me, I'm actively exchanging emails with our Director of HR for your first question. And we can add this on as another question and hopefully get that to you before close of business today.
I appreciate you. We're going to go to Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to really commend you guys, I think, because you guys have been really, really thoughtful and open to changes in traffic patterns, certainly the Traffic Division, and have really, really helped certain parts of my district. And I really, really appreciate that. I'm particularly thinking of Bellona. That was a long, long endeavor. And I just want to appreciate you guys for that because that was not an easy one. And I can tell you, I hear a lot from the folks in my district that they really, really appreciate the effort that you guys made to make it safer. So just wanted to thank you for that. I also just generally, out of efforts out of the Traffic Division to be more open to speed humps, new signs, new traffic patterns, so on and so forth. I know that there has been recently concerns about material shortages in our ability to purchase materials. I wanted to give you guys an opportunity. Can you tell us a little bit about what's going on there? What we expect, what we see, and how we're addressing it? If there's anything we can do to address it? Is it our purchasing system and the change in the purchasing system? Is it changes in global availability of these materials, certain raw materials? Is it both? Do we have shortages in the sign shop, so on and so forth? If you can give me some insight on what we're seeing and how we understand that problem. Thank you.
Yeah, we are definitely thought that we had enough materials to kind of hopefully make us through the main season. But like we said, we kind of blew away this number of speed humps we did. There are a certain number of sign shortages or sign material shortages. We've put in numerous different types of purchasing items. But we are moving and are asking the Department of Finance for an emergency procurement to get those. So I mean, I don't want to talk extensively, but I think purchasing in this city is very difficult, and it always has been. It's really always been just hard. So I know that we've moved for an emergency, and we hope to really make some easier contracts. So I come from Fleet previously. Fleet had a lot of contracts that could get you multiple different things easier. I'm hoping that we can also follow that type of model in the future so we're not having to write a million different contracts for this thing, this thing, this thing, this thing. It really just takes up so much paperwork. That's my opinion on that, but I don't want to, I can't say too much. But yes, it is, there are some shortages on the sign pieces. We have put in and requested an emergency just so we can get them. It will still take some weeks to get there, but we do, we did use our materials quicker than we had expected this season.
I appreciate that. And I encourage you guys, if there are things that we should be considering as a council in order to be more effective on the purchasing side, you guys certainly are not the only agency experiencing these sort of troubles. I want, I certainly want to be helpful, and I can guarantee every single one of my colleagues here and not here want to be helpful in that regard. I think it just, it's a, it's a major inefficiency, I think, we're seeing across the city. And you're right, we've been dealing with this for a long time. So if there's anything we can do to be helpful, I want to offer that, that help. And lastly, not a question, and I'll follow up with you on this. I have a number of issues I want to follow up with you, Director Sharkey, just to make sure we get addressed. But with that, I will yield back to the chair. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We're going to go to Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hey, everybody. It's your best friend, Ryan Dorsey. I have about a million things for you all, per usual. Just want to start with, the highway user revenue is a big, big deal. That's, and it's really great. And I want to, you know, of course, we have to commend Senator McCray for such incredible leadership on that and for the department for supporting it and helping to rally the support of basically every other jurisdiction in the state. I mean, taking a real leadership role there is, it was an incredible feat, and it was really amazing to see happen. And so perhaps my concern with HUR is a pittance in concern, relatively speaking, but we have just an ungodly number of vehicles in the city with tags from out of state. And our portion of HUR is directly defined by the number of vehicles that are registered in Baltimore City in our jurisdiction. That is exactly how our portion of HUR is determined. And so far as I can tell, we have no operation whatsoever to try to address this number of vehicles that are living in our city on a day-to-day basis that are not registered here, despite the fact that the law requires them to be registered if they're going to be here for a month or more. This is obviously a problem because so many people are seeking, I think a significant number of these folks are seeking to keep their car insurance rates manageable where they are so much lower in other jurisdictions even, but including also out of state. But also, we're a big university city, right? We've got so many schools here, and we've got students here who legally should be registering their vehicles here when they're living here with those vehicles for months and years at a time. Can we do anything about this?
I mean, I believe that would be a legislative fix. It would be interesting. If you have ideas, I'd definitely be there. We can't, I would say we could, not sure. There might be like an, if you have RPP, do we let out-of-state people get RPP? I don't know. I'm trying to think here. I haven't really thought about this, but if you have other ideas of what other places have done, I definitely.
I think, I think it has to do with how we define kind of the concepts like remaining. I had a question for the Law Department recently on, and they gave a kind of, I think, a preliminary kind of informal opinion on what it means to remain on public property for an extended period because our definition, the state definition of abandonment, for example, says, you know, if you are, if you have, for example, no tags on the vehicle and it remains on public property, you know, I figured if it's, if it's in one place on public property in the city and a month later it's at another place on public property in the city, that to me is that it has remained on public property. But there, there's a certain inclination to split hairs about whether it has remained continuously or taken, been taken out of the jurisdiction and brought back or some, you know, something that splits hairs like that. So I think that you're probably right. We do need some assistance in the way of making this workable by way of, I think, clarification from the state, either in terms of asking the Attorney General's Office for an opinion on how they think enforcement of this law is actually feasible or in, or by way of asking somebody in the legislature to put forth a bill or asking for an administration bill to clarify in the law how this could be made more feasible in the text of the law, which does bring me to my next question. So I'd like to see that put forth by the department as a priority legislative issue in the coming session. I have a couple of other things that are in that same vein. We have an Attorney General's opinion on interpretation of the state code on towing maximum fees. A number of us here have had a lot of back and forth about this. A number of us here know that it revolves around one line in the state code that is so poorly written that it took the Attorney General's Office a year and 22 pages of an opinion to clarify that one sentence. We need to get that sentence corrected so that the towers in the city stop disputing its interpretation because even with the Attorney General's opinion, a number of the towers in the city insist, that's just an opinion. That's not the law. We need to get the law changed, and since we brought forth that Attorney General's opinion, I think the impetus is upon us to request that that law be fixed to simply, more clearly relate what the Attorney General has said about its interpretation. And third, on the state law front, is we need to continue to vigorously pursue autonomy in how we use speed cameras in the city, giving us room to vary the threshold and not be bound by city, by school locations because I believe that main streets and colleges and centers of business and the communities where children live that aren't necessarily within a half a mile of school, where they have to walk to and from the bus and home on that end of their trip to and from school and where they are in those homes and neighborhoods throughout the whole summer long while they're out of school, these things are just as important, and we need to be making that case as vigorously as possible and to allow for traffic enforcement with automated cameras day and night and weekends, too. Is this on our priority list for this upcoming session to continue pressing this?
Liam? It's just broke. So to be completely transparent, all of our legislative priorities for 2023 session were due to MOGR back in September. The good news is one of our recommendations was increased autonomy when it comes to automated enforcement. That being said, we want to be mindful, you know, of perception. We've gotten a lot of authority in recent years when it comes to automated enforcement with 83 speed cameras and with bus lane cameras that people, most of the public probably doesn't even know they're coming because we're still in the early stages of gearing that up. We're probably at least a year from seeing those first bus cameras being implemented. So the short answer is yes, we do want increased authority and autonomy, similar to some of those other counties like Montgomery County, but we have to be very careful about how we approach that. So that was submitted to MOGR. We're looking forward to having that conversation. Some of your other items, we'd be interested in talking with you in more detail to see if there is an opportunity for flexibility to submit those late. So thank you for your suggestions, Councilman.
A couple other comments on things that were touched on in the initial presentation. I'm very thankful for the community-led placemaking program. I went through what I felt like was a grueling year-long process of trying to help bring that about, and then it didn't go through the APA process. So I think that that's a problem. That needs to go through the APA process. I'm just putting that on the record. It did not go through the APA process as legally required and needs to. You touched on the number of speed humps that have been installed, which, for which I'm grateful in a way, and I'm sure many people are very grateful in another way. But I'm, as a cyclist, not the person that they are intended to slow down. And they make it really, really unpleasant for, as a cyclist. And I believe that we have the capacity to build bike-friendly speed humps and that they should be the standard. And so far as I have been told, the only reason that we are doing this is because we believe our own staff to be incapable of doing it. Am I to believe that that's the reason why we are not building bike-friendly speed humps? I don't believe that our in-house staff are physically or intellectually inferior to the people who do this for us on a contractual basis. And if we're able to have contractors do this for us, why are we not able to do this when we install speed humps in-house?
Yeah, I don't know who told you that, but we, if we can get somebody to train them accurately, we would be interested in that. But we did ask for training, and we could not get the training from the other local contractors because it would be a conflict of interest. So the Ethics Board shot down the free training. If we can figure out another way to buy training, we would be interested.
And I just wanted to rewind just a tad back to Community-Led Placemaking Program. It is an awesome program, and hats off to our planning team for taking a lead. DOT, you're, you've got some really great folks under your umbrella. Our policy team did text me, and it sounds like there were conversations with Law Department in terms of the APA process with that plan and the advice that we got. And we could look into it if you would like, but the advice we got and opinion from Law was that because it involves an MOU for each executed agreement, it's not subject to APA.
Yeah, that's not true. I have written, I can forward you written communications from the Law Department that says otherwise. The fact is, you can't put, you can't put forth an MOU that's based on nothing, right? There is an underlying policy to any, to any agreement that we enter into. And what the Community-Led Placemaking Program is, by definition, exactly what the APA exists for, to regulate the development of processes by which the public interfaces with government. That is exactly what the APA is for. If we're going to offer people the opportunity to enter into an MOU as members of the public with us, the government, that is why the APA exists, and the Law Department knows this.
We'll look into it. And just as a reminder, no agency within city government has been more aggressive in terms of APA compliance.
I'm not going to contest that. Thank you. Madam Chair, I have a number of other things, but we'll defer to your time if you'd like to come back to me.
I will, I will come back to you, Councilman Dorsey. Thank you. So I recently had an issue in my district within the Seatmont community where there was zero communication about a traffic pattern change on a major corridor prior to being placed. My office and collaboration with DOT staff then had to do, we had to complete retroactive community engagement. And I do want to thank sincerely Chief Torena Galloway and her team and the other members of DOT who did work diligently to engage impacted neighbors and remedy their concerns. My question, my first question is, in general, how is DOT communicate and propose projects in uplifting the public comment period with residents, community associations, and other relevant stakeholders who are directly impacted?
Torena, would you kick that off?
Good afternoon, everyone. Torena Galloway, Chief of Engagement for DOT. We have different processes for different things. With the adoption of complete streets, our resurfacing changed. So now when roads are resurfaced, certain elements are going back in. Typically, when we did resurfacing, sorry, we didn't have to do additional notifications because what came out went back in. In the case of Sedmont, what came out didn't go back in. It went back in with other features. That's something internally we're working to collaborate more on. I was not aware of that change until it was on the ground. I am now talking more with Tuck Division, who does most of those major resurfacing projects. And I'm also talking regularly with the Maintenance Division to make sure I'm made aware of what's happening so that we can get the information to the public more timely. We're also looking, as we go into our next fiscal year, to increase resource, you know, allocations for those types of services where we need to do door hangers, emergency printing jobs, things like that, to make sure that we have the resources on, on hand to be able to get information out quickly in addition to social media, Nextdoor, some of the web-based stuff that we do send out as well. So we're increasing what we're doing moving forward. And apologize for the issue in your district, Madam Chair.
I thank you again, and I thank your team for the work that you did in collaboration with my office, again, for those, for the residents within Seatmont. When will there be a standard operating procedure or a clear process for how this is handled in the future so we can make sure that it's not happening? Because my concern is that if it happened within one community within my district, how many times has it happened within other communities throughout the city? And maybe someone didn't make as much noise as we did?
Yes, thank you for that question. I will get back to you. Liam will, will flag this and get your response. I don't want to misspeak, so let me just confer with my colleagues.
It's on, I'm taking a list of questions. That's on there.
Okay. They said they have it, Sophia. How are we, this is, this is my next question regarding this. How are we engaging communities with a higher elderly and disabled population?
Maybe I should just keep the mask off. So in communities where we know we have a high rate of elderly individuals, when we do community engagement, we try to use things like senior centers, places that they already frequent. We also will do, we make sure that all of our communications include phone numbers as we do understand that many of our elderly residents are not as comfortable with the virtual platforms and email. And then we, we try to make sure that we're, we're moving into more of a hybrid where we're doing community meetings on, on our projects that involve an option to attend in person. Of course, the pandemic really set us back in that area, and we were forced to do things virtually or not at all. We, we have come out of that, and we are doing in person. So we do send mailers depending on the footprint. If we know it's a area, not just of elderly, but just a digital divide, right? We're making sure that we send out postcards to those impacted residents, going to those community meetings and speaking in person as well to just get the word out. So there are a variety of outreach.
just get the word out. So, there are a variety of outreach approaches based on the project scope and the location that we're trying to do now.
Okay, thank you. An action item within Mayor Scott's first-term action plan was to increase outreach and education efforts, some of those you spoke about, to encourage transit use and car pooling through a lens of sustainability. According to the action plan tracker, that item is still in the planning phase. Can you provide the committee with an update on what planning has looked like to increase outreach and education efforts, or what the collaboration with the mayor's office has looked like on this particular item within his action plan? And again, this is regarding increasing outreach and educational efforts to encourage transit use and car pooling through a lens of sustainability.
Yeah, I think that that's a very important piece that we've been pushing since we got here. Luckily, circulator ridership is starting to bounce back up as well as bus ridership. So, it is important to drive or to increase transit public usage, public transit usage, to decrease greenhouse gases. Luckily, we had a person that's whole job or primarily worked on this. They were out for quite an extended period of time. They are back. So, we have a person that will be doing a lot of that, both through social media and other means. We also have a new graphic designer who can also publicly start to make things, I guess, more digestible to the public. I really do believe that just the written word is very difficult to bring these, any transportation concept, out. So, we've bolstered our communications staff in general to start working on that. Also, our community staffs work on all of those things. We did have a big focus on the 83 speed camera rollout. So, now that we've moved past that main blitz, we can move more further into this even more on the pushing for transit. It was definitely difficult during the pandemic, but people are going to be coming back to transit. People are coming back to the city. People are starting to see traffic jams. There's going to be ripe for that. I think we did, yeah, we had a lot going at the beginning of the pandemic, and we're going to increase soon now that we've gotten over the hump and are fully staffed in the Communications Office.
Okay. I'm going to do a shift to some questions around ADA. And then, I'm going to give my colleagues an opportunity to ask their questions. FY23 budget includes a one-time capital funding, one-time capital funding totaling $13 million to meet the compliance standards set by the Americans with Disabilities Act. $10 million from the state, $3 million from the general fund. Can you walk the committee through your $13 million funding utilization strategy?
So, if you were to look at the actual needs on the earlier chart, the actual needs for ADA are 676 million and probably climbing for ADA needs. We have also, so that is why we have created the ADA Division. So, we are going to be putting a good chunk of that money into asset management of the ADA. Asset management is key. We have outdated asset management for ADA ramps. We will be increasing that. So, I say probably three to four million will be going to that. The rest will be going to increasing ramp changes or fixing ramps, especially around any place that we have in recent years repaved the road. So, fixing the ramps by the road. So, like I said, 676 million to start, but we are going to be really pushing ramps, especially in high transit corridors or equity zones or places that especially are critical. So, that's just a drop in the bucket of the need. And it will, it might take a little longer than just this fiscal year because it will be capital money, but that money will be well-spent and we'll need gobs, gobs is the right word, gobs more of money to make it happen.
So, equity and fixing existing and building out new infrastructure to bolster ADA accessibility in Baltimore is critical. That's one thing that we know. So, what is DOT doing to ensure that neighborhoods, especially middle neighborhoods, that do not always see the investment that other neighborhoods do? What is DOT doing to make sure that neighborhoods receive proper ADA accessibility changes?
Yeah. So, if we're looking at any place that we're doing resurfacing, we need to make sure that that ADA is tight. The next piece is, of course, transit corridors. So, transit corridors is super key on ADA accessibility. If you have a non-ADA accessible sidewalk next to a transit stop, it can make it less useful for a large portion of the residents. And it actually makes MTA's job better because if the person can get to the regular bus, they can then get on it and won't have to use MTA mobility. So, it's a huge, huge piece in mobility circles to actually focus on ADA near transit stops. So, that's our next focus is there. We have, we are looking also in corridors into the future, and this will be a couple of years out, and focusing on corridors, say, that have more equity needs because the roads and the sidewalks are, of course, just as troubled in those areas. So, we will be moving towards all those areas. But $13 million is really just a drop in the bucket, and really, it's going to need to be a lot more money to focus on all those areas.
And I just wanted to add, Councilman, one of the great components of the Complete Streets ordinance, kudos to Councilman Dorsey over there, is it requires DOT to submit to the City Council an annual Complete Streets report. So, that's actually, our most recent report was published in August, and it shows your equity maps. And then, it is a great visual aid to show you where the sidewalks have been repaired the past couple of years, you know, where the speed humps are going. So, there's a number of key metrics that we track through geographic maps, and you can actually see how we are trying our best to spread it out across the city into a whole boatload of different neighborhoods.
And that's what prompted the question. So, I know that there is a middle neighborhood strategy that is being developed with some other agencies. And I want to make sure that the neighborhoods that, again, these middle neighborhoods that we need to ensure are stabilized, that they are receiving.
And just so, yeah, my apologies, but just so we're clear, you're meaning kind of the neighborhood that doesn't hit the equity zone score but isn't exactly the wealthiest neighborhood, the middle neighborhood?
That's exactly, the neighborhood's in the middle.
All right. Let's just take note of that, team.
So, when we talk about equity, I want to see equity for all neighborhoods. Thank you. And I did see the map. We're going to get to Councilman Conway next.
That was a great question, Madam Chair. And I appreciate you asking it because probably 70% of my district is middle neighborhoods. So, you know, as you were talking, you had me thinking about some of the regional studies and corridor studies that you guys are currently working on. Also, want to commend you guys for a lot of that work. We're still kind of ironing out some of the details, but it's certainly appreciated, all the work that you guys have done with the community and the constant feedback that you've taken along the way. I just kind of want to, not so much a question, kind of throw it out there as for something to chew on. And in the planning discussions that the Planning Department is doing to make sure that we have an equitable approach to planning across the city, of course, time and time and time and time and time and time again, transportation is the conversation at hand. And I just want to make sure that we're always thinking about what that looks like, what equity looks like, what our middle neighborhoods look like in that calculation. One of the ideas that we discussed during one of those planning sessions that happened to be in my district was the idea of a 15-minute city. And a 15-minute city essentially means that you can get anywhere to anything that you may need, whether it be groceries, whether it be your job, whether it be a place of faith, whether it be recreation, whether it be a park, whether it be a school, so on and so forth, within 15 minutes without a car. And so, you know, we start thinking about bikes. We start talking about walking and pedestrian accessibility. And I'm thinking about this primarily because a lot of this discussion is happening on the York Road Corridor, and we've been talking a lot about transit and what that looks like in the future. So, not so much a question, just continuing to feed what I already see out of the department in being thoughtful about the future because a lot of these plans, they take 20, 20-plus years to actually be implemented completely. And the discussion, the best case scenario should have happened 15 years ago. Nonetheless, we're here, and we have an opportunity to really rethink what the city looks like and rethink our relationship with the need for vehicles. Because today, 30% of the city, 30% of homes don't have a vehicle, and they're dealing with those issues today. So, just a point of discussion, a point for consideration. Phil, if you'd speak to it if you'd like, but just, I want to put that out there for folks to think about.
No, I mean, I think that dovetails greatly with the overall Complete Streets legislation because if you look at, say, the suburbs, they have a certain thing, and it's car-dependent. The city was built as a non-car-dependent place, but we became car-dependent over time. So, you know, we can definitely bring that special, those special things of being able to have ease of access to a coffee shop or, you know, a restaurant or a bar closer and closer to people that'll be, in a more reliable fashion, it'll be good. So, getting 15-minute city across the whole city will be difficult, but I'd say it's a goal to work towards in the long run. And also, two tidbits. Number one tidbit is, York Road Corridor is the number-one bus route in the city or the MTA system. And number two is, there are a whole bunch of cool restaurants now up on North York Road. I went to Clan Destino last week. Lots of fun up there, so.
Yeah, yeah, the speakeasy. I haven't been there yet. I'm not cool enough, so.
Not as cool as me, man.
I'll say, you know, I know one of the things I requested of the Planning Department was to begin tracking that going forward. And we have a 15-minute walking map that the Planning Department already creates. I would love for them to think about that for other types of transportation. But I think it may not be so difficult to accomplish as we might expect. Some of that might be transportation. Some of that might be planning and making sure that we have key resources evenly distributed around the city. Pointing in case in point is grocery stores. You guys don't control that, but certainly, you know, we can work with the administration to build relationships to attract those into the city. Or we, as a council, can think about how we can incentivize those operations in the city, knowing that there's a great need for them. Nonetheless, I really want to encourage partnership across our agencies with planning, certainly with DOT, in order to make sure that we're thinking more comprehensively. Because like I said, this is a 20-year endeavor, 25-year endeavor. And if we don't start today, we'll be right back here, and my children will be thinking about exactly these issues. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you. On that subject, I will just note that it's basically impossible for us to become a 15-minute city with the lack of housing density that we have in so many neighborhoods through the city. It cannot be understated how critical population density is to the success of walkability and livability in communities. I represent neighborhoods that have six dwellings to the acre. That's a laughably low density of housing for any city, anywhere. And the cities that are leading on this, like Paris, have 40 times that level of density. And we have a zoning code that prohibits us from developing the level of density that is needed to become a 15-minute city. So, I think, you know, if we're on a 20-year-long trajectory, the first thing would be to stop having prohibitions of the necessary components in place. But that's not on DOT. I wanted to ask about materials. You had a hiccup a while ago with a lack of, there's a, I forget what you call them, for the square tubing for street signs, right? Kind of ran out of them. And it's just, was it an order size issue or a supply chain issue? And have we resolved that? Because I know that we're also waiting on a supply of flex posts, and we seem to have a chronic kind of hiccup in steady stream of bike racks. I have bike racks in my district that are, you know, four months waiting for the bike rack since the request was made. Are we having materials problems, challenges?
We did discuss that, yes. We do, especially in the sign-making process. There is definitely a difficulty shortage of materials. We, on the first part, which is, I guess, our mistake, we ended up using more materials this season than expected. We are having difficulties in purchasing. The purchasing process in the city is very difficult. And I, you know, kind of, so it is difficult. We are working to put in an emergency procurement or asking the Finance Department for some of these items and hoping to have some more contracts that are much easier to use. Contract flexibility is something that really improves operations across. So, when I worked for Fleet before, it's not as though we would have to go in every single part. So, if we said, this is a Toyota radiator, now I have to go out and put a new contract out for a Toyota radiator. Or now I have this Nissan radiator, oh, I have to do a contract. It was never like that. So, we had a lot easier contracts that could give you a larger range of items quicker. And I think that that type of just-in-time ordering or something is something that certainly needs to be explored and worked on. So, in the short term, we're asking for emergency procurement powers to get those. We do believe we need easy contracts that can be quickly grabbed and taken.
So, thank you. And I know that we have, these procurement problems are really plaguing the city in a lot of different ways. When we are placing orders, do we have a, like a methodical approach to making sure that we are ordering enough so that it's enough to get us to when we can order more? Like, because I don't want us to run out of things that we need on a routine basis. It's one thing if we are having acute procurement problems. It's another thing if we just aren't ordering enough when we do make orders.
Yeah. I think with, I think it's the ease of use of the contracts. The city contracts are very difficult to let, and then for a new contract to actually happen. So, it's probably, if I want a new contract of something, it takes at least nine months to a year if I want a new contract of something. If a contract of something that we have ends and there is no other contract in place, it can take another year. If there is a, if we've spent too much money on the contract, that will need a change order. So, I mean, I guess I could talk pretty extensively about this, but my personal belief is that the system somehow needs to be easier. And I'm not blaming any particular person because this is the way it's been since I've been here. I remember, I just remembered last night that I saw a memo when I first came here in 2005, talking about how do we fix the purchasing process? And it was, I was like, I was just like, okay, this sounds awesome. And then, no. So, I certainly think that this is endemic to a long-term thing where the agencies need more flexibility. We probably need some training for staff, but we also need to make it easier to do.
Okay. Let me run down my list here real quick. Are we at this point accounting, like, consistently for damage caused to streetlights? I've been asking about this in various ways for years. And, you know, I think I got an incomplete accounting for it some time ago, but was, but enough to make some sort of calculation. I think, you know, we're going to incur two-plus million dollars of damages to streetlights this year, just from cars crashing into them. And there's virtually no other cause for streetlights. Just, they're not just falling. There are some that have blown down in the wind, which is a problem in and of itself. And I've got some of those same Howard Streetlights up on Hartford Road in Hamilton, by the way. But virtually, there's no other cause for streetlights to end up lying on the ground in pieces except that cars are crashing into them. And right now, them. And right now, both of the streetlights adjacent to the Morgan State softball fields are down. And I think it's probably the third time those have been down since I've been in office. And while it's important for us to use volume of crashes that are reported and severity of crashes involving injuries and other factors for why we prioritize safety improvements in various locations, I'd hate for it to have to come to an injury crash or a severe crash for us to prioritize a location where, for example, we know that over the last five years, a car has careened off the road 15 times. And tracking streetlight damages is a pretty good indication of how that, of, of where those things happen. But so far as I know, we're not on a consistent basis tracking and mapping where streetlights are knocked down. Are we doing that yet? Am I wrong?
So I would say, while I think you hit on a number of great points, and I am familiar with the data that Brent, our former colleague Brent Hooper shared, I believe it was something like 800 or so, a rolling average of 800, um, streetlights being hit each year that needed replacement. I think our traffic team, like, we have the software to track where crashes are happening, where incidents are happening. Where I think there might be a challenge to meeting what you're asking us today is the capacity. We already are getting hundreds of public traffic calming requests, and we are trying our best to stay above water with those. If we're talking about adding another 800 locations where streetlights are being taken down, you know, where do you, what's getting cut as the priority to deal with that? So that's an honest question that I throw back at you, Councilman.
Let me respond to that. When I have conversations, for example, about zoning, right, zoning, for example, that would allow us to have greater housing density, and somebody says to me, "How can we, how can we allow for more housing to exist when housing code enforcement is as bad as it is?" I say, "These are two separate things. One is a policy matter of whether or not we should be prohibiting housing creation, and one is an operational matter of whether or not we could do better in housing code enforcement." What I'm asking for is not more traffic calming at this moment. What I'm asking for is for us to just at least account for where damages happen. And that's as simple as mapping 3-1-1 requests or SRS that involve streetlights that have been knocked down. That's not hard. And that's not something we should be, you know, holding at arm's length as something that we should be tracking as a city, any more than we should be holding at arm's length the capacity to publicize where people have made traffic calming requests, right? If it's an issue of actually, actual capacity to deliver on traffic calming requests, that's a different thing than shouldn't we create a transparent system for where traffic calming requests have been made? And that is also something that I have asked for repeatedly. I think that in the interest of transparency and availability of information within the department, ease of access to that information for council members like me and to the public in general, as a city that espouses to be, to have a high value placed on transparency, that these things are not much to ask because they're actually not hard to do. Most of these things, if I had access to the data and information, I could develop a public system for putting it out there in 15 minutes, and I'm not exaggerating at all.
Well, and your sentiments are noted and there. I wrote down, as an item that we'll follow up with you on and will look into as a team, the only word of caution I'll share is, since I've come to DOT, or come to work at DOT, a lot of the things that seem easy aren't often as easy as you may assume. So just throwing that out there.
Councilman, do you have any other questions?
One last thing. Thank you, Madam Chair. Steve, you talked about, when the chair asked about programs in place, initiatives underway to improve safety. I just want to remind folks that cycling infrastructure is statistically proven invariably to make streets safer for everybody, not just cyclists, not just pedestrians, but drivers as well. We made a goal, we set a goal in 2017 of building out 55 miles of bike lanes by now. We're being trounced by other cities in terms of the rate at which they're building out cycling infrastructure. I'm very happy for the cycling infrastructure that we've built. I'm very happy for the cycling infrastructure that we've built in my district in particular. I'm very happy about the collaborative experience that I've had with the department to make it happen. But since we set that goal of 55 miles, we've, we've actually, to have been developed by now, I'm pretty sure we've developed about a tenth of that. And so when we talk about programs underway, it's just to me, we have a plan, a systematized plan to build out the bicycle master plan of the city, and that should be right at the top of our list of things that we have underway to bring about safety improvements in the city. How much more of the bicycling infrastructure are we going to get built in the next year or so?
Theo, can you jump in on this a little bit? I do want to mention that we do have a new bicycle contract that took quite a long time to get. So it's a very easy and flexible contract. It took me about three years to figure it out and get it out there. So it not only provides bicycling, the needs of a bicycling contract or a bicycling job would also have pedestrian improvements, proper speed humps through that contract. So I'm super excited to see, because in the past, we didn't even have a mechanism to really build bicycle infrastructure. It was always ad hoc or as change orders on other things. So I'm definitely excited that we finally are starting to have that. But I'll let Theo jump in as well.
Sure. Thank you, Steve, Councilman Dorsey. Along with the contract that we have put together, which is critical, of course, we've also done three or four things to really get our bike infrastructure going. The first thing that we did is we beefed up the capacity inside. So we hired a specific bike planner. This is less than a year old, so you've got to bear with us. Everything takes time in the city. It's not my fault, not yours. So number one, we beefed up, we got two city planners specifically working on advancing the bike infrastructure in the city. Two, we've added in our comprehensive CIP request, specific bike infrastructure dollars. Those are things that were not done in the past. We used to develop our planning, planning efforts in the world of building infrastructure with grants that we were getting from the state and at federal level. We are making changes here because we are first getting some of that money to be able to match the dollars that we're getting. So that's, again, it's not something that was done three years ago. Then the third thing is we are in the process of updating our dedicated bike lanes, master plan, to the planning commission. This is actually required of us. In 2023, you will see that exact evolution of our bike infrastructure with the numbers that you're asking for, going from what we set ourselves to get to, to where we are today. It's in the process and it is a required piece of document that will be presented to the planning commission in early 2023. So it's coming. You will have the numbers. I can discuss them with you. I can share them. The reality is, yes, we are not where we thought we were going. But remember how far we were and how much we've done, including, again, some numbers in the CIP, making sure that we're getting grants that we can match with the local funds, including the fact that we've beefed up the planning shop. And on top of that, of course, I want to make sure that you also understand that as we develop bike infrastructure, we do get hiccups all the time from city residents as well. In and of itself, that derails the process. So if we've been in communities where they told us that they don't want bike infrastructure, even though we've done our work and our due diligence work to come to them, to show them that it is not just building one segment, it is about connecting a network. So when we get those hiccups, when we get into communities that are a little bit bike-averse, bike-infrastructure-averse, part of the problem is it takes time to get over that. So we're working on this. You and I and many others in the city believe in this. Not everybody does, but it's work in progress. Thank you.
How are you all being creative when you talk about communities that may not be open to bike infrastructure? Because what I want to make sure that we're also paying attention to is maybe not just bike lanes or bike infrastructure. Maybe they are mobility options as well. I have a lot more users who use motorized scooters and things of that nature as opposed to bicycles. So will we make sure that in the future, these bicycle lanes and these bicyclists know that they will need to share that lane with other people who may not be using two wheels to get through? How are, how are you guys preparing for that or being creative as far as maybe not having just bicycle lanes, but mobility infrastructure? So all users will have an opportunity to use them?
Sure, Madam Chair. A couple of things that we are actually looking into. One is to, it's education. It's about education in a nutshell. So we have a mayor's bicycle advisory commission that actually talks about more than bike. So we're trying to get educated. True, that means, because it's a commission that helps residents to understand what exactly is happening in their neighborhood. So at the commission, when you look at the, the members of the commission and you look at what they represent, they represent various, various, let's say constituencies, including people with handicaps, including a lot of people that don't necessarily, so we're working on that just because we also understand that. It's, it's education. Education in the sense that some of those residents that you mentioned are not necessarily against bicycling, but they want the bike, the bike infrastructure to be shared. So we are aware of that.
I think people would be more open to a lot of ideas, maybe if they are also phrased differently in certain communities.
Understood.
Because like I said, in some of my communities, I'm seeing more, more folks on the streets who may be in different, they're using different, different, different items to get around outside of cars and outside of bikes. And I want to, I want to make sure that we're keeping everyone at, you know, top of mind. So you're saying that although it is San heads, a bike commission, we are thinking about people, people who may have disabilities as well and maybe utilizing another type of vehicle as well to get around.
We are.
And we may want to also include that in some of this education, when we are putting forth ideas in certain communities to let them know that this, maybe this infrastructure is for everyone. And maybe folks would be a little bit more open in some communities knowing that what they see and the people that they see trying to get around with in their communities would be able to safely get around to.
Well, well taken, Madam Chair. Point well taken. Thank you.
And I was just going to add, like, some, to your point, Madam Chair, sometimes, as opposed to saying bike facility, I've seen it more receptive, communities more receptive to the term shared-use path or trail. So that's something that, you know, with, with terrain as guidance, we are working with our, our planning division and our traffic division who are working on these projects to kind of embrace ideas that our communities might be a little bit more receptive to.
Maybe, yeah. Because maybe with a picture of a bicycle, maybe I also need to see someone with a, with a mobility chair.
Yeah.
And them knowing that they can share that lane as well.
Madam Chair.
Question, you have a question?
I have a couple other questions.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks for making the time. I want to let us get out of here, so I don't want to hold us up longer. We ran a street cuts APA, public comment a while ago. Bike More submitted a whole bunch of really good comments, none of which were incorporated into any reworking of that policy. I have a feeling that I wouldn't be seeing as many intersection crosswalks striped, you know, one-eighth one way and the other seven-eighths still left the way they were before somebody cut one-eighth of an intersection apart, if we had incorporated some of these comments into the street cuts policy. I mean, this looks ridiculous. I drive around the city and I see an intersection that had an old crosswalk that BGE or somebody cut up some small part of it, and now it's got new, high-visibility striping for some, you know, eight-foot portion of it next to the curb and the whole rest of the intersection, the whole rest of the crosswalk looks exactly the same as it did before, instead of us making them redo the whole crosswalk to the current standard. There are a variety of other things that were suggested in their comments, but we didn't take any of those comments. Are we going to put this policy out there again and actually have an interest in public comment during the public comment process?
You know, I'll jump in here, Councilman. I think the street cuts policy was a bit unique there, just with the timing with APA and previous efforts to create a new policy that had a robust public comment component prior to APA. So what's a little different from street cuts compared to some of our other APA priorities in terms of policies is really the focus of the agency initially was to get the new, pre-APA, but new, street cuts policy into APA format. And when we did that, it forced us, we're required to do the 30-day public comment, even though internally, what we were saying was our priority was just to get the new policy properly formatted, formatted. If I just may finish this point, the thing that we've also discussed internally and what I've stressed to our teams is that these policies are living documents. Don't think of them as final. And we can always revisit the policy in the future to make tweaks and make it better. And then the final comment I want to say is I understand and have talked to Jed many times about numerous policies, including the street cuts. And I know where Bike More feels about it, but I also think, to be fair, we also are well aware of where the utilities feel about it. And that's a tight rope that we are constantly trying to walk and maintain, you know, solid relationships with people that perform work in our right of way.
I don't have any sense of pity on BGE. Let me be real clear about that. What was suggested is that we do things that are in place in other cities and where those other cities manage to have their utilities and their contractors do better than we expect of them here. And I, that's what I expect, is better than what we expect now. And I think it's a bad look to put out things for public comment and then to take none of the public, public comment into account. The last thing I want to bring up is, because there has been contract, a lot of discussion here today of the difficulty of contracts. I'm not going to belabor the point, but you know that I asked for the plans for a contracted resurfacing plan long, long, long before the resurfacing season, but because we had not planned changes that were necessary, we were not able to do the, the resurfacing project as, in the, in the time that it was planned to be done. When, if I know that it takes us nearly a year to put out a contract to do something like tech resurfacing, when then are we deciding when tech project, what tech projects are going to be under that product, that contract and necessarily also preparing plans to go along with those tech projects? Because necessarily, under the complete streets law, every project that tech division does is of the, the size that it must be reviewed under the complete streets law. If we're If we're not, and, and, and have changes made under it. If we're not initiating the, the development of those plans for change early enough, then we have no possibility of realizing those changes when it comes time to actually do the surfacing work. So when are we, have we decided, because it's two months to 2023, have we already decided on the tech contract for 2023 surfacing? What projects are going to be done? And have we already contracted or developed the plans for all of those projects?
Can you kick it off? So we have a draft list of tech projects for resurfacing. It's not big, because have you seen, as we were very transparent about in our presentation today, the highway user revenue has been depleted for quite some time. I will have to let, um, the Director or, or Division Chief, Bhamal here, talk a little bit about the timing with the, um, the actual lane striping. Specific to the project, I think you're talking about, Councilman, and I believe this was shared with you, part of the delay, uh, for Hartford Road from Northern Parkway to County Line is due to, um, a staff member from Traffic Division, one of our traffic engineers, departing to go work for another jurisdiction. Um, so those things do happen periodically, and we just have to adjust accordingly. And I believe we have, that's why we're leaning on contractual resources to finalize the plan for that section.
Yeah, I'd like for somebody to directly answer my question, but because you brought that up, I'm also going to say, with all due respect to the challenge that is created by people leaving unexpectedly, that is not the reason why the plans were not prepared, because I started asking for those plans to be prepared in January of 2021. I didn't want to belabor this point. I started asking for them to be prepared in January 2021. It is only now that they are being developed.
Well, to be completely transparent, Councilman, our traffic, if I may make this point...
Okay, one at a time. Mr. Davis, you have the floor.
Thank you. Our traffic engineers are not just sitting there waiting for work to do. They're working through projects all of the time, and we've worked very hard to staff up our capacity.
If you believe I've insinuated that people are just sitting around, I don't know where you got that idea. I believe that what I'm talking about is directly to the point of saying that if contracts take a very long time to get prepared and to get executed, then that necessarily dictates the timeline of everything that needs to lead up to those contracts. So we are two months from 2023. Have we determined the resurfacing projects for tech? And have we initiated the planning process for changes that will necessarily need to be made on all of those projects?
We have a draft list that will be finalized. We have some resources, so we are continually increasing the resources towards this. Like I said, we've doubled the number of traffic engineers in the division. We're looking for more and more capital resources. But to be honest with everyone here, the road resurfacing dollars are still not a lot. So if we're all excited about lots of roads getting resurfaced, let's not be there. But yes, we are adding more and more resources towards complete streets types engineering, but it's not...
Thank you, Director. We are going to move on to public testimony. Members of the public, you will have three minutes each to, three minutes each to provide your testimony. As a reminder, if you are in the council chamber and would like to testify, please sign in and check the appropriate box on the sign-in sheet just outside the door. If you have joined us through WebEx and you would like to testify, please use the raise hand function to let us know. We are going to start with members of the public who are in the chamber, who have signed up. And we're going to start with Shail Seltzer. And please remember to state your first and last name, and also list if you're with an organization as well.
Uh, Chairman Cray, I ask for six minutes. I, I would like to ask some questions to the Transportation Department.
Ms. Seltzer, this is a testimony period. You will have three minutes maximum.
May I use this pull-out? Put something on because I asked...
Okay. Ma'am, we don't have, we don't have any materials or anything for you to host your, for your pull-out.
I did, I did ask earlier before it started. Don't start yet, please. I live in Liberty Square. I'd like to ask, how many of you own cars or share cars or drive cars or use, uh, service? Can I show hands? Own a car, drive a car? Everybody? I, I don't know. Okay. Um, we're very car-centric in this country, including Baltimore, or especially Baltimore, because there's cities like Tampa and Milwaukee that are, uh, making, uh, made, made a decision to exclusively make their transit systems streetcars. There's a, a family mourning today, wishing it wasn't Election Day yesterday. Anna and Miguel Ortiz were struck by a car because they wanted to go vote in Gaithersburg, Maryland, and they died. It's one of many. I didn't hear anything about pedestrians. I didn't hear anything about pollution. I didn't hear about, anything about the future. I didn't hear anything about rail. I didn't hear anything about streetcars. And I didn't even hear anything about light rails, which is a type of streetcar. Okay, so, um, I hope that, um, I hope you feel a lull in speed bumps because it impedes ambulances and other emergency vehicles like fire. It actually can cost lies, uh, lives, 10, 10 seconds. This is what they use in Europe, which is continuous sidewalk. So this is a sidewalk, and the blank space is a tree, is a, a street. And what they do is they put this so that the car, so this is the street. So that the car has to go up a bump, flat, and go down, up, flat, and down. And so, because street, stop signs don't work, and 130 pedestrians died in 2020, and, um, I would venture to say that, um, we're going to probably break a record this year. Okay, so, um, street, smart cities, ones that are really, really smart, are integrating streetcars into their smart city, uh, programs because it, it just makes sense, and it's like getting a free streetcar system. So, um, so this is actually a cable car, but that runs underneath, and it's not good for places that get a lot of water. So this is a trolley pole.
Ms. Seltzer, could you, um, say, can you, can you conclude your testimony at this time, please?
What happened to my time?
It, it's elapsed.
Oh, it can't be. Okay. Um, okay. I, I, um, countries like Mexico City, Delphi, um, Delhi, Singapore, Seoul, Paris, Moscow, London, Melbourne, and Chicago is the only one in this country that uses circular loop lines, and I've drawn...
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Seltzer. We are very grateful. Um, can you conclude at this time?
Please, just one, one more, please. Tires, um, make, are made by...
We are going to recess, um, to briefly reset. We'll be coming back with testimony, um, from WebEx briefly. Thank you. Thank you. We're going to briefly check, um, WebEx to see if we have any additional attendees who would like to testify at this time. If you would like to testify, please use the raise hand function to let us know. And that is going to conclude public testimony. Um, we do thank you all for joining us today, um, and we are grateful for the testimony that we did receive. The committee will reconvene the legislative oversight quarterly hearing to continue this important discussion, and this hearing is now in recess. Thank you all.